So then, good afternoon. This meeting of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees is now called to order at 4:31 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 on the agenda. We will ask each item if there is public comment. Catherine, could you please do roll call?
Okay, I see. I'm just bringing Marcus Texan in. Okay, sorry, roll call. Trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Here.
Uh, trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Deluna is absent, we believe. Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here, I don't know if you guys can hear me. Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay.
Trustee Goff is still absent?
Absent, but should be joining us soon.
Okay. And trustee Dodd?
Here.
And trustee Baker?
I am here.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can we have trustee Dodd, please, lead us in the pledge?
Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have 2.3 adopted the agenda. We are going to be pulling an item from consent. This is not for discussion. We're just pulling it because it's not ready. So Item 10.7, there's Career America LLC, a ocelot contract of services going to be coming back to us at another time. So pulling that one. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, we can adopt by consensus. And then, let's see, we have a new bit that we need to do, and that is with our virtual meetings. So I get to read this. This is, "I have placed on the agenda to allow the board to acknowledge that the conditions for holding A, B, C, 3, 6, 1 meetings have been met by the district. The Napa County Public Health Officers have recommended measures to promote social distancing thus pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 E1A and the memorandum from Napa County Executive Officer Min C. Tran and Public Health Officer Karen Ralucio, M.D., dated September 27, 2021 regarding recommendation for continued remote attendance at Brown Act meetings. This meeting is being conducted electronically. The Board of Trustees will consider conditions every 30 days." And it, just so everyone knows, it is our plan to, in the future, put this on consent, because we do have to have it every month. So we will leave it on consent every month so that we can just keep moving it along. But if we get to a point where conditions have improved and we want to consider coming back in person again, then we can pull it off of consent for discussion. So do I have a motion for this item?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second, Dodd.
Okay, so the first from Baldi, a second from trustee Dodd. Trustee Dodd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Iverson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And then trustee Deluna is not with us, and I don't believe trustee Goff has joined us yet. So I will vote aye as well. So we have approved that unanimously with those of us that are here. So, moving on, we are now ready for public comment for closed session items. So closed session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. The items that we will be discussing in closed session are conference with real property negotiators, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, public employee discipline dismissal release, conference with labor negotiators, and public employment. And so, does anyone have, uh, any, do we have any public comment on any of those items? Otherwise?
I do not see any, and I haven't received any.
All right, hearing none, we will then adjourn to closed session, and we will be returning at 6:00 PM. So we will see you shortly. We are returning to public session at 6:04 PM. Uh, we have no announcements from closed session. So now we are moving to public comment for general items. This public com, sorry?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could we also just note that trustee Goff is here? She joined during closed session.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, she, she was, so we now have six of us. Uh, trustee Deluna is still absent, but the rest of us are here. So.
Thank you.
"This public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the board place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes." And I believe we do have at least one item, correct?
You have this one that is posted. Um, he asked that you read it aloud, and then after you do that, you might ask if there are other public comment among the attendees.
So here we go. Quick, so I could get it open. Well, you've got it. Let me see if it's big enough for me. Oh, yeah, I can read that. Okay. "To the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees, during the board's general meeting on June 10, 2021, trustee Baker announced the formation of an ad hoc committee to impart address what the chairperson identified as a broken relationship between the board and the academic senate. I respectfully request that an item be added to the board's next general meeting, that item being a report on the activities of said ad hoc committee. Thank you for your time and considerations." This is from Joshua Mario. And, thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time?
All right, anybody in the public who would like to raise their hand? That's at the bottom of your screen. I don't see any.
All right, then.
Okay.
With no further public comment, then we'll close public comment, and now we are on to reports. So our first report is from the Academic Senate. Dr. Eileen Tahara, and I believe she's present, so you have her report.
Good evening, uh, board members and colleagues and community. Um, this evening, I'd like to begin my report by stating that on September 14, the Academic Senate passed a resolution communicating its concerns with the Presidential Search Process Timeline and composition of the Presidential Search Committee. I wish to commend trustee Baker and trustee Goff for addressing the concerns communicated in the, um, in the resolution. Um, I will, um, I will be sending the resolution and, uh, so that it can be posted publicly, um, later this evening or tomorrow morning. I haven't had a chance to, um, get my feet under me this week, um, with all of the different things. Um, we are preparing, so, um, we are preparing for our IEP visit that happens tomorrow. Um, and so we are excited and looking forward to reporting back on that visit. Um, if you recall, uh, that, um, Dr. Kraft, um, Dr. Parker and I have worked together collaboratively to, um, secure a $250,000 grant to restructure faculty professional development both with, uh, within the Senate. So I'm looking forward to reporting back, um, on that visit. Uh, we've also, the Senate's been diligently working on revising, approving, and getting, um, uh, board policies and APs um, through the process, so you'll be hearing more on that. And, um, for the, for those who have the honorary degree, um, um, board policy and administrative procedure, I just want you to know that you will be hearing soon from us, um, as it's in the queue. Um, so, uh, let's see. Um, lastly, the Academic Senate is studying and discussing, um, the emerging issues with the Planning and Budget Committee, um, in terms of the processes and assessing how those processes are working or not working. And so I will also be bringing that back, uh, our findings back, uh, to the board. Let's see, I think there's one more. Um, oh, and on, uh, finally, the Academic Senate has voted, has voted to award $3,500 student scholarships this year. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tahara. Um, next on our list is Academic Confidential Senate Report. And Mr. Harris, are you here?
Yes, excuse me, poor dog's barking outside. Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and the Napa Valley College community. Since the September Board of Trustees meeting, the Administrative Senate has been busy with the business of moving the college forward. We would like to thank the board, and especially trustees Baker and Goff, for taking the feedback and thoughts from each constituent group that relate to the upcoming and ongoing search. Her President Superintendent, the willingness to listen to the thoughts, concerns, and ideas of faculty classified professional administrative groups is very much appreciated and very much welcomed. I would like to personally thank trustees Baker and Goff for the time that I was able to spend them a few weeks ago via teleconference. Your thoughtful consideration of the ideas and concepts around this search process has not gone unnoticed, so thank you very much. The college faces many uncertainties in the upcoming months. A transition of leadership, a continued transition and uncertainty related to the pandemic, and the dynamic and fluid financial status of the institution. One variable we can control is how we proceed with the search for the new President Superintendent. The development of the job description, announcement, and timeline associated with the search indicates that the board has taken the feedback received from the constituencies to heart, and as well, the search consultants has done so as well. The Administrative Senate urges continued patience and deliberate consideration so as not to rush the process. Finally, the Administrative Senate membership thanks Dr. Kraft for his time as we continue our discussions relating mutual gains and the welfare of our constituency group. We look forward to continuing discussions in the next several months that we have with Dr. Kraft. Thank you very much, but concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, next on our list is Associated Students with Napa Valley College Report. Uh, President, Mr. Marcus Texan, are you with us this evening?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Kraft, college administrators, faculty, and the college community. ASMBC has taken a bit of a slowdown, thankfully, but we still are continuing to plan for, um, an October event coming up on, I believe, October 28th, so two weeks from now, um, as well as the Acting Chancellors' Visit on November 8th. Uh, myself and Holly have been working hard and trying to, uh, include students and student engagement in that, in, um, planning that event, as well as, uh, highlighting key, uh, key points to focus on, um, during her visit. And I'm incredibly excited and, um, for, for the Acting Chancellor to come visit us this year. Other than that, I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
Wait, unmute didn't work. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Texan. And next we have Ms. Lucy Larson, President of the Classified Association, and she has a report for us.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Um, thank you. I just have a statement I'd like to redeveloped by the Classified Union Executive Board. Um, classified represent the largest constituent group on this, constituent group on this campus, and yet frequently have the smallest voice on committees. If we are undervalued as stakeholders in our presidential hiring committee, it will be difficult to imagine ourselves as stakeholders after the hiring is over. If our president is to be hired with unequal representation, how can we convince students that we are an equitable, equitable institution? Um, given that MVC has been mandated to create an equitable, equitable and inclusive environment, we took this excerpt from the Chancellor dated June 5, 2020. District boards, review and update your equity plans with urgency. It is time for colleges to take out their equity plans and look at them with fresh eyes and answer the question of whether it is designed for compliance or for outcomes. College leaders, both administrative and academic, must have candid conversations about the limitations and barriers to pushing their equity plans and agenda further, and where there are opportunities and support to accelerate the work. Colleges will need to pull together across-campus team, including research, human resources, technology, faculty, support services, classified staff, and others, to focus on naming the barriers, identifying solutions, and then rallying, rallying the full campus to engage in meeting the needs. We've all seen campuses do what was previously considered impossible as they responded to COVID-19. It is time to channel that same can-do attitude and community resolve towards addressing equity and structural racism. This work must be led system-wide in partnership with district trustees, CEOs and presidents, and all the campus leaders at all levels. In our opinion, the MVC Board of Trustees has not followed the mandate set forth from the Chancellor's Office regarding equity and inclusivity outlined in this letter. The future college president will be the president to all constituent groups. By denying equal participation of classified staff, the Board of Trustees have actively violated the very notion of shared governments and chosen to disengage from the equity mandates outlined by the Chancellor's Office. One way or another, our voices will be heard. Suppressed voices only grow louder. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Um, next we have Classified Senate Report. Uh, President Martin Schumaker, Mr. Schumaker, are you with us this evening?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't see him in the list.
I don't think I've seen him either. But if he come, if he, if he pops in, we'll, we'll squeeze him in. In the meantime, we are moving on to 7.7 Faculty Association Report. Uh, Ms. Krustie Iwamoto, President, are you with us, Ms. Iwamoto?
I am with you tonight. Good evening, trustee Baker. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Uh, just, uh, wanted to let you know, I apologize in advance because I will have to leave right after my report. Um, but, uh, I wanted to, uh, just, uh, let you know that this weekend I will be going to the Community College Association's Fall Conference. Myself and Forrest Quinlan will be, uh, delegates for Napa Valley Colleges Faculty Association, and, uh, we look forward to representing our colleagues there. Um, you know, there's always stuff going on in there, and so I just wanted to, uh, just wanted to note that we recently found out that, uh, I don't know if, uh, the board is aware, but there is something called a 50% law, which means that, uh, community colleges must spend 50% of their budget on, uh, on teacher salaries. And, uh, we've recently learned we are under that by, you know, could be not too big of a margin, but could be a pretty big margin, and that is an issue. And so we are working with the district to solve that issue in a way that actually would be helping us attain the goal we had already set, which was to raise the salaries of Napa Valley College faculty. Um, so that is definitely high on our agenda. Um, another thing that I did want to just mention is I know that the board is, um, either has already made or is making decisions tonight as far as the vaccine mandates. And, uh, just letting you know, that of course is half of the job. The other half is going in and negotiating it afterwards. And so, uh, we will be, uh, as soon as that decision is made, uh, we will definitely be working hard in negotiations to work on an MOU, uh, covering things like testing protocol and timelines, and ways to make sure that our faculty, our staff, and our students are all protected. And, um, so we are looking forward to working with the district on that as well. And, uh, that is my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, so then we're moving on to General Information Discussion Action Items. Next on the list is 8.1, President and Cabinet Report. So, Dr. Kraft.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Um, four short reports tonight, accreditation, public affairs, and then a VP, business and finance, and followed by, um, VP of student affairs. So let me start with, I'm not sure whether it's Dr. Warrenall and Dr. McGowan tonight, um, but we'll see. Looks like Dr. McGowan is on, okay, all right. There we are. Hi, Jim.
Hi, Ron. Good to see you. Um, okay, hi, everyone. Um, trustees, uh, colleagues, Napa Valley College community, hello, and thank you very much for this opportunity to address you tonight. I am here with the October accreditation update, um, that, uh, Dr. Robin Warrenall and myself have put together. So I will, um, proceed now. If Catherine would be so kind as to advance the slide.
You just have to ask. Here we go.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, so, uh, as of today, the Accreditation Steering Committee, which as you probably know, consists of the constituent group presidents, the vice presidents of the college, um, a trustee, and the president, in addition to, uh, Dr. Warrenall and I. Um, we have reviewed, uh, Standards 1, 2, and 4. And if you remember, the Accreditation Steering Committee review is the last stop, uh, for the Iser draft, uh, before the review by the campus community. And the first of those reviews is underway. We actually held the first of, uh, five forums, uh, this morning, um, covering Standard 1. I think we had about two dozen participants in the forums between Zoom and, uh, in-person in the community room, which is very exciting for a number of reasons. And we gathered feedback, uh, in, in, in both formats, in addition to soliciting, uh, written feedback for, over the next few days from, from, uh, readers of the, of the standard. And, uh, I think, um, it would, it was a success, and it was really, um, useful and good to hear from people who hadn't been part of the review process, uh, up until that point. So we're looking forward to, uh, more campus forums, standard, they're, they're gonna come quick now. Um, Standard 2 next week, and then Standard 4. Uh, we've pushed back Standard 3 for, uh, reasons I will explain, and then the Quality Focus Essay gets its own campus forum, uh, in middle November. Um, okay, so the ASC has reviewed 1, 2, and 4. Uh, ASC is due to review Standard 3, or what we have of Standard 3, um, October 18th, that's Monday. Um, part of that story is the, uh, the, the Standard 3D that is, that is still pending beyond the first draft. So I'll share some of that with you on the next slide. So, um, we're about seven weeks away, I think, from the submission of the Iser to ACCJC. So, uh, you know, I think, I think as we approach, everyone's attention should be, of course, I think that, right? Everyone's attention should be, um, uh, turning towards, towards the Iser, and in particular, 3D. We have a first draft of 3D that was submitted to us by, uh, Vice President Parker back in March. Um, and there it remains. So, um, we are, uh, hoping that our interim Vice President, um, Roberts, uh, VP of Business and Finance, uh, Roberts, will, um, continue the work, uh, bringing us, um, another draft that we can continue to revise and review. But it's worth probably noting at this point that 3D is a big one. It's, there are 16 standards, which I believe makes it the largest of all of the, uh, the standards. And as you can see from this slide, um, it's a pretty comprehensive review of our financial practices and, um, budget development and reporting, uh, financial aid contracts. It's, 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 it's a big one. So, uh, that probably goes without saying, but it, it can bear repeating. Um, so just, uh, wanted to put that up so that everyone is aware of, of what's involved with Standard 3D, and maybe, you know, um, get people thinking about, about the, the necessity of, of, of some concentrated attention, uh, on this section. Um, Catherine, advance, please. Thank you so much. Um, so, in, in other news, uh, we had, we mean, meaning Dr. Warrenall and myself, had a very interesting meeting with Dr. Catherine Webb, who, who is our liaison with the ACCJC. And we had gotten to the point where we were starting to, um, identify as, as readers of the, of the Iser responses, identify, uh, improvement, areas for improvement, areas for attention. I think I mentioned some of those, uh, last month that came out of Standard 1. I hope to do that with Standards 2 and 3 at our next board meeting in November. Um, and we were concerned, how exactly to approach this, uh, in, in, in terms of, of what we identify and how we identify it. And Dr. Webb had some very interesting things to say. We had previously been thinking about sort of bullet-pointed lists, sort of task-based, you know, these things need to be done. And she kind of steered us away from that and said, you can put those in the evaluation in terms of identifying things that MVC, you know, needs to pay attention to in the coming months or years. She said, but, but when we, the ACCJC, I presume she was, uh, speaking on behalf of, uh, think about the areas for improvement, we're thinking big. We're thinking, um, institutional, broad-based and participatory, uh, areas for improvement that can be identified by looking at patterns that emerge from across the standards, not just like Standard 1 or Standard 2, but really across the standards, and, uh, sort of ask the institution, us, to, to identify a handful of, of institutional, long-term, um, significant changes. And so with that in mind, um, and this was really just 48 hours ago or so, uh, with that in mind, um, we are, and we'll share this with the Accreditation Steering Committee on Monday, um, sort of retooling the, the improvements to embed more, um, say, a specific AP or BP that needs to be, uh, revised or, or drafted. That, that can go in the evaluation. That's not necessarily an institutional improvement. That's gonna require a lot of, um, work across the campus. So, um, instead, we're going to probably concentrate on those most important, um, projects that emerge, um, out of the Iser, like the revision of planning and budget that my colleague, uh, Dr. Tahara referred to a few minutes ago, and will likely be hearing about again, um, if not tonight, then soon. Uh, another, um, big topic is the sort of developing a, a, a culture of continuous evaluation for effectiveness of all of our practices. We do do that very well, um, as reported in the Iser, in, in some important ways. But there are some other areas of campus where we, we don't do it so well. So that could use some attention, too. And then, um, the, the ongoing question of participatory governance and, and, and how, um, it is understood on our campus and how it can best serve our campus. And so, you'll, you can see that these kinds of improvement plans are much more significant or broad-based than, say, like, developing a specific AP, um, or a BP even, which is something that can be done, you know, doesn't, shouldn't take two or three years to do. Whereas these are more comprehensive. So this is just a kind of preview of where things are going, a significant change in our thinking. Um, Catherine, please, advance to the final slide. Okay, so, uh, coming up real quick, um, we, uh, like I said, we have a series of forums planned, a sort of relentless, uh, um, schedule of, uh, review and, um, uh, any kind of revisions that need to, to happen after those reviews. Uh, we'll be pursuing that through the month of October and into early November. We anticipate getting the first reading, um, going, uh, in mid-November, um, around the time of the board meeting, uh, so that the Board of Trustees can have their first reading and make the necessary, um, comments and suggest changes, uh, as we move towards the final submission in December. Last thing I'll say, um, everyone can expect a sort of staggered process. Um, we're gonna be submitting it to future steps, uh, the same way we've been kind of doing it in the past, rolling out Standard 1, Standard 2, Standard 3, sort of staggering it to facilitate the finalization. We, I don't anticipate we'll be able to, um, deliver a finished Iser, uh, to, to, at any, to anyone at any point until the very, very end. Part of this is to facilitate the work that still needs to get done. So we'll move on Standard 1 in a, in a different level than we'll move on Standard 2. Um, so the Board of Trustees can just keep that in mind. Please.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. McGowan. I see, uh, trustee Iverson has his hand raised. Do you have a question?
I just had one question on, so like, the planning and budgeting practices, and hopefully I didn't miss it, but could you just elaborate a little bit on some of, like, where exactly are the areas that we could improve on that? Like, could you give us?
So, um, I, I guess. I will, um, try to communicate my, my view on what the Iser So I will try to communicate my view on what the Iser and the review, the various review stages have told to us, but I invite my colleague, Dr. Warrenall, to add to it. And after all, the planning is her area of expertise. I think that what has emerged in the various stages along the way is that we have a couple of areas of challenges. One is common understanding about the process itself, points of decision-making, the criteria that is used during those decision-making, at those decision-making points, some communication problems related to the planning and budget process, particularly at the end stages, linkages between, say, local or program-level resource requests and the final resource allocation decisions that are reflected in the budget. There are some general, I think, opaqueness, if you will, that has been identified by various reviewers along the way. Participatory governance and its relationship to the planning process and budget development. There is a, I think, identified need for greater integration of the Planning and Budget Committee specifically into the budget development process. That could use some attention. I will stop there and invite Robin to add to that.
Yeah, let's see. So thanks Jim. Let's see, so one thing I want to say is that I would offer that the Iser development process and particularly some of the evidence and even some of the graphics that we've embedded in the drafts have provided a starting point, I think, for some of that communication about practices and processes that Jim was alluding to. And I think that's a start and it is something we can build on moving forward to get that common understanding about what the processes are. The conversation, I think, both during and then immediately following the forum, as people kind of lingered around or had, you know, side conversations with, is that there are a lot of pieces of the planning and budget practices that could be improved. And it's not in any way, at least from my perspective, it is not solely a planning and budget committee role to fix all of these things. So as an example, something that's come up routinely is the linkage between program review, annual planning and budget, and then the final budget. Well, everyone, or most people on campus have a role within program review. And, you know, this is more about coordinating the pieces across it. We do have a, you know, our annual planning and budget template helps document decisions that are made along the way and then linkages between our institutional strategic plan and the final piece. But I think there's a perception that we don't use that template as much on the tail end to communicate the whys and the hows of the prioritization and then who gets what at the end. It's not, so as an example, in terms of the evidence that Jim and I collected, as well as writing teams, it wasn't posted anywhere to go find it. I instead had to make requests of the VPs or individual budget center managers. So again, those would be some key stakeholders that are, you know, outside of the committee itself. One thing that I was talking with a classified member who attended the forum and we were talking about the template and how the template can be improved to make it a little more, people, it's basically an Excel file. It does have some dropdown menus embedded in it, but some people figured out ways to fill in with what they want to instead of what's on the dropdown menu and things like that. So and there, you know, a lot of ways we could explore and that could be something that, you know, we collect feedback and evaluate the practices from both, you know, the folks that are the budget center managers who are working with their systems probably to fill in the template, but also you'll find out what works and what doesn't work from all people that are involved in it, including the area councils for the prioritization process. So I think that, so this gives you kind of a sense that it's a lot of small pieces. I do think that a lot of these things that we've talked about are refinements, again, to our existing practices. It's really about strengthening them and revisiting them. One thing that came up today is that we used to have, well, when it was in person, obviously things were different and maybe easier to do. But, you know, we've had a lot of turnover in faculty and staff in recent years and I don't know whether our training that we provided to budget center managers as part of the kickoff to the annual planning and budget process is maybe as robust as it used to be. We used to have instructions and we'd go through and, you know, way back in the day, everybody got a packet. It was actually a hard copy packet. And I think, you know, that might be part of the reason that there's become this kind of deviation between people doing what they want to in the Excel file template and what was actually expected in the Excel file template. So that's just kind of, to give you a sense of that it's how widespread and how well a lot of folks across the institution will be part of the solution and defining what it is or what we want to try to strengthen some of these processes.
Can I just add one more thing? Thank you for your indulgence, everyone. Trustee Iverson, a lot of the conversations, a lot of what's written in the Iser currently in the draft and a lot of the conversations around this issue have focused on the planning side of things because we have much better documentation for that. Let's remember that 3D, which is what we're all waiting for, is the section of the standards that cover our integrated financial planning, our participatory budget development, transparency and decision-making. A lot of the things that we're discussing as being issues or challenges really have yet to be addressed in the Iser. We have a draft that was submitted in March. It was thin in both narrative and evidence and there it remains. So to really answer your question about where are these issues and when it's specifically, excuse me, when it comes to financial planning and budget development, hard for me to say because we're still in the process of developing that part of the Iser.
Well, I appreciate the response and for both of you guys, the time and energy in putting these reports together and I know it's a lot, so. And it's very informative and thank you.
I have one more. You're welcome, Trustee Iverson. I have one more thing to add because Jim and I, well, it's been a long day. We'll just say that.
Thank you, Robin.
And so this is particularly for Trustee Baker, but obviously other trustees who might have an interest in it. So at the meeting last month, you mentioned about how our existing mission statement has a date with 2012 associated with it. And what the standards say is that we, you know, the board approves, we publish, and we periodically review our mission. And actually, in our last self-evaluation report, we had identified kind of a task to do, which was to evaluate our existing mission against the, what were then the new 2014 accreditation standards. And so our last comprehensive review was in 2015. In 2016, we did conduct, and the planning committee helped coordinate this effort, a campus-wide survey to find out, to explore that. And so we do have that. It's in evidence and it's posted in association with Standard 1A, which is posted for the campus community, including the board at this point. And so we did conduct that, but the results were very mixed, so much mixed in terms of should it trigger a review or should it trigger a revision? It was very mixed. And so the default was basically we stuck with the mission as it was and there were, so it has been reviewed. It did not yield a revision. And that, and the standards say periodically reviewed and revised as appropriate or if necessary. So I just wanted to let you know.
So if I can just quick verify what I'm hearing you say is that we are currently in compliance and will be in compliance for this accreditation round. However, we still want to address it and I think at this point we would be bringing that to the forefront with our new president/CEO, which would probably be this time next year, if not a little bit earlier. If we do that, if we put that off to have those conversations and move forward with our new superintendent, is that going to in any way negatively impact the accreditation process? So I just want to make sure I understand, you know, what our responsibilities are and then if there's any timeline that we need to be concerned about moving forward, if we want to move forward sooner than not.
Yeah, so I would say not particularly a concern. Our practice has been we review the mission between accreditation cycles. We did do that. It did not yield a revision. So, but in terms of this too, you know, one of the findings, one of those kind of bullet pointed tasks that Jim had alluded to during his presentation, did include that we don't have an administrative procedure that defines locally what our cycle of periodic review is. So that is not necessarily, again, the standard says we review it periodically. It doesn't say you must have written, you know, in stone somewhere. How, but, you know, but what happens is, so one thing we want to do is develop an AP and that's one, something that's come out of the Iser. What will then be important moving forward is once we have an AP and if we say it's every four years, then for our next round of accreditation, we darn well better have every four years or else then we get, you know, that is an issue if we're not doing what we said for ourselves, you know, the standard that we set for ourselves.
So, thank you. I do have another question. May I just want to make certain, is there anyone else from the board that has questions for Drs. McGowan and Warrenall?
No, thank you. I kind of had one just on the planning committee, but I didn't want to, I mean, we could spend a lot of time here, obviously, but how is the planning committee collected? And I'm sure I've asked this in the past and I apologize for asking again. Maybe it's helpful for some of our newer trustees.
I'm sorry, how do you ask it? Like how?
The question is, yeah, so the question is, how is the planning committee formed? Who is, who's on that?
Yeah, so there's membership that's defined that is based, it's designed to be approximately 50% faculty and 50% non-faculties. So that includes both administrators and classified students and administrators by definition of their role and also as representatives, but it's about 50/50. And then there's an administrative and a faculty co-chair of it. And that's now the Planning and Budget Committee, so we did have two separate ones and then they basically merged the membership of the two.
I have a question. I'm wondering, you guys have done such amazing work and I was really hoping I could make it this morning. I was actually surprised that I didn't, especially when I heard you had pastries that nobody ate. So, but are they still there?
I had to eat them all myself.
Thanks for taking that breath of tea. But you guys have done this excellent work on, particularly on Standards 1, 2, and 4. I have, you know, a lot of our concern that I'm hearing here and I know that I have is about that 3D standard. And then I'm just, so you received the draft in March and they alluded to that a couple of times and where does it go from here? Where, who, who's got the ball right now?
So I can answer that. So we did get a draft along with all of the other first drafts that have been through multiple layers of revision, review and revision by, you know, as many as two dozen people per standard. 3D, we were kind of sitting on, waiting to integrate it with the rest of Standard 3. And after a number of delays, we decided that it's not, we can't wait any longer. And so the Accreditation Steering Committee is going to look at all of the drafts of Standard 3 on Monday, including 3D, because I just don't think that it's, we can wait any longer for that. So there, the Accreditation Steering Committee, which as you know, is the constituent group presidents and the vice presidents of the institution, the president of the college, and Robin, myself, will have to make a decision on where to go from here. Now, we do have, we have looped in, I mean, we've had several, a couple of meetings with Vice President, Inter-Vice President Business Finance, Roberts. I have nothing but praise for his competence and his abilities, but I am a little bit wary of handing this very important set of standards to a new administrator with very, very high expectations and a very compressed timeline. Again, this is, has nothing, it's not a referendum about his competence or qualifications, but we have given him a very Herculean task. And so I think, again, like I said earlier, I think it just bears close attention.
I know that, you know, and since his time is limited with us, that's something that we're concerned about at number front and wanting to make certain that we, we've already been talking about, you know, give us a list, what do we need to do? What do we, you know, what can we get done before you're gone? And then making certain that things don't fall off the radar in the transition.
Well, I forgot to mention Trustee Deluna. Trustee Deluna is a member of the Accreditation Steering Committee and if it's appropriate, I'm sure she can bring news of Monday's meeting back.
Is she, and she will be there on Monday?
I couldn't say.
Oh, okay, but she's invited.
Of course.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments? We'll try to make it to the next one, especially for the pastries. All right, thank you very much. So moving on. Ron, I think it's.
There we go. Sorry. Holly is going to do an update for us on Public Affairs.
I am. Catherine, I'll open the slides. Good evening, trustees and colleagues and community. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a brief update on what we are up to in Public Affairs and Communications. And we, it's currently me, as Ally Schull, who I have talked about in the past, our superstar digital and marketing communications specialist, has taken a position with the Foundation for California Community Colleges. And we are sad to see her go, but happy to have an ally in the communications team there. Next, please. So Napa Valley College has been participating in the annual media preps survey. And this survey will help us learn more about students' attitudes, opinions, and media consumption habits. It really offers us a unique opportunity to collect this crucial data and improve our marketing and outreach efforts and services. And I'm excited about this. The survey goes through the beginning of November. It'll be a bit before we have those results, but we'll bring those back and share those at a future board meeting. Next. Government relations, as you know, that's part of what we do. And last week was exciting. Governor Newsom signed college affordability and accessibility legislation, including AB 928, which makes it easier for students to transfer to four-year universities, AB 1377, and SB 330, which are both intended to improve housing affordability for students, and a number of other bills intended to make financial aid more accessible, as well as AB 927, the back laureate degree legislation that we have been watching and the board supported. It has now been signed and now our staff will have to look at the opportunities therein. Next slide, please. Community engagement. It's, we were sort of on hold for a bit there with COVID, but we're finally able to start getting back out there in the community. And I'm looking forward to introducing some of our newer colleagues. Yesterday, Dr. Doug Marriott, our new senior dean for career education and workforce development, spoke at Napa Rotary and he did such a great job that he was invited to speak at Kiwanis today. So he's been making the visits. Next, please. We continue to share stories about our students and our alumni and the many goings-on at Napa Valley College. For example, you may have seen the story in today's paper about the fall performances. And I have to admit, kind of fun to be on the front page four times in two weeks. We had four front page stories, the arts are back, our student survey to inform the possible vaccine requirement you'll be discussing this evening, the very generous $10 million donation from the Wine Spectator Scholarship Foundation, and also a story on our Basic Needs Center with a great photo of Kyler Thompson. Next, please. We have been working with Dr. Van Leeuwen-Sami and others across campus to celebrate our Latinx Heritage Month and Philippine American History Month by creating Zoom backgrounds and providing additional promotional support. Next, please. We also celebrated HSI Week again this year. This is something we've done the past couple of years. This year, we shared stories about our Latinx employees who have themselves attended Napa Valley College. And we shared photos along with little stories where they talked about the importance of intending an HSI-designated college. The ones we featured this year were Marie Ramos-Tamayo, Myra Estrada, Liliana Vega, and Dr. Alex Guerrero. Dr. Alex Guerrero. Next, please. We continue to share information about what students need to know, like the imminent transition from web advisor to self-service, transfer opportunities and more. We'll be focusing on spring registration very soon as registration for spring starts November 15th, as well as BAFTA and Cash for College programs. Next, please. We worked very closely with Dr. Guerrero and the learning communities to create a piece that can be shared as a whole or individual pieces. This is about our various learning communities and we'll be focusing on support services next and creating a series of collateral to support the various efforts throughout the campus community. Next, please. Um, there you are, trustee Baker. Um, as we have been working with PPL to create a website for both the VP Business and Finance search and soon the Superintendent President search, we realized that we really needed a media kit. We started with the board bios and I want to thank all of the board members who responded to my inquiries for information. This is just one example, but you each have your own page. Next, please. And you ask we deliver. At the last board meeting, trustee Goff mentioned the desire to have a poster for her classroom promoting career education. So we created one. I know it's a little hard to see because it's small, but we're just fine tuning a couple of things and we'll be printing these out and getting these to your classroom very soon. Next, please.
Thank you very much. I'm excited.
Good. So what's coming up? Um, next week we'll be sharing information about undocumented Student Action Week. We're also working on the 2021 Annual Report, the website, and a number of other projects, including, um, we're working with the ESL team on bus stop posters and a variety of other fun projects. And we'll share more about those as they come. And finally, as Marcus Tesson mentioned, Acting Chancellor Daisy Gonzalez will be visiting Napa Valley College on November 8th. I do hope that the members of the trustees will, uh, join us for the meet and greet. And we're very excited. Napa Valley College is one of eight colleges included in the chancellor's visit. This is her fall listening tour and she'll be accompanied by some of her senior staff, a few members of the Board of Governors, the president of the state academic senate, and the president of the student academ, student senate. Um, the listening tour serves as an opportunity for Dr. Gonzalez to listen and learn from our students. And we have students who will be leading a tour around campus and then we will have a town hall meeting. So we're very excited about that. And thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a little update on some of the things we're up to.
Good, exciting things. We are, we are such in the vanguard, our little college here. I love that.
With the royal we.
That's right.
Holly, I'm familiar with that.
Let me jump to Oscar Joharo, who has a, a couple of things and then we'll finish out with VP of Finance, um, Doug Robert.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Thank you much. Yes, uh, in, in, in the interest of time, um, I'll just highlight, uh, a couple of the items, a couple of notes in the initial three items that I, that I posted for you. First is to let you know that, uh, we have completed our annual visit of our seven, uh, public, uh, schools that we visit every year. Uh, we visit them to, uh, to reacquaint ourselves with, with the new staff they may have, but more importantly, to, uh, to let them know what services we are, uh, looking at providing for them during the year. Um, what I do is I invite, uh, five to six staff members and administrators, um, along with this case, the issue we had, Dr. Parker, who also joined us for call visits. And, um, what I've heard, what we heard from each of the visits is that, uh, the schools are very, very pleased with the services that we provided them. They're very, uh, very appreciative of, um, of the, uh, the service and the attention that we provide them and their students. Um, so, uh, so that's going very, very well. The other item is that you'll be receiving a say the date, uh, invitation here, hopefully by Monday, for the 16th annual high school breakfast. It's scheduled this year for November the 4th, from May 30 to 1030. Uh, we've already sent out approximately 148 invitations to, to partners, the schools and administrators, uh, and other staff members in the four counties that, that we serve. We receive students from, from each of the four counties. And, uh, again, this is the, the event that we have every year where we update our partners on the activities and, uh, the, the update for the spring semester. And so we look forward to that as well. Uh, and the lastly, uh, last, uh, last month received, uh, I guess a great surprise in a way, uh, we were notified that we are recipient, we, Napa Valley College, are recipients of nearly $5 million HSI STEM grant. And, um, there were 98 grantees that were awarded nationwide. Napa Valley College is one of 19 of the community colleges in California that were awarded. Among those include also, uh, uh, Gavin College, Bishop Oak College, and, uh, Santa Rosa. And, um, so we're, we're pleased that, that this, this grant has been awarded. Uh, it was led by the, the preparation and the research was led by our associate dean, Lisa Casar, uh, associate dean of Mason STEM. Uh, he gathered a group of individuals, faculty, staff and administrators to sort of plan out and look at the possibilities of what we could offer in this grant to make it a competitive. Uh, and, and it, and it worked out very, very well. We awarded it. Um, one thing I'd like to add, uh, just that, uh, just as a last comment is that Napa Valley College has, has received such grants, um, HSI grants, uh, since becoming an HSI in 2008. And, uh, to a tune of approximately 14, 14.4 million dollars in federal funding. Uh, the last three awards that we have received, uh, are grants that were prepared, uh, developed and, uh, and submitted, uh, through student affairs. And so we're looking forward to, uh, to this grant. Uh, the, uh, this application, this grant application is given the name of Cultivamos con Amor. Basically, what we're saying here is that we develop and we cultivate our students' journey to Napa Valley College with care, with intent, and with purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Um, Doug, please.
There we go. I'm unmuted. Okay, I'll, I will be brief, um, with regards to, um, you know, the audit and, and, um, finance practices. Uh, thanks for the hard work of the folk in, of, in the accounting department, Arissa Pook and her staff. The books were closed for 2021 and just this week, we submitted the 2021 trial balance to the auditors. Audit wise, the next step will be setting the date for the start of their field work. It should be noted that the due date for the 2021 audit to the chancellor's office is, uh, February 28th of 2022. However, I will be pushing for an earlier finalization date. The auditors did respond to the chancellor's office regarding some requested technical additions to the 1920 supplemental information, but those, um, additional information had no impact on, on the clean opinion that we got for 1920. And other than that, the sole focus and primacy of finance for the last few weeks has been addressing the material weakness identified in the 2019-20 audit, namely, closing the books for 2021 and setting ourselves up for a timely audit. Getting the 2021 CCFS 311 submitted and certified by the 10/11/21 deadline and getting the 21/22 CCFS 311Q done ahead of time and presented to the board. And both of those reports I just mentioned are going to be discussed in agenda items 11.1 and 11.2.
Thank you. That is it for my report so far.
And, uh, does anybody have any questions for, for, on any of these? I, I have, I know I have some questions about the finance stuff, but for, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask now or to wait until, um, we get to the later items?
You will be deluged by, uh, financial information in short order, so.
Okay. I'll, I'll hold on to them and see what my questions may be later.
All right.
Thank you.
As we come up on 8.3, I would, I would ask Dr. Munzamid to, uh, lead us through if that's okay on this resolution.
Good evening.
I didn't see her name, chair. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure. I'm actually talking to the chair. I'm not recognizing you yet. Sorry, because it's got to be the chair's call. I'm sorry.
You can recognize her. That's okay with me.
So you're on now.
Dr. Munzamid, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, my colleagues at Napa Valley College, and members of the public. I am very pleased to present to the Board of Trustees two resolutions that honor significant and valued constituencies of our Napa Valley College community and that recognize the important contributions that their communities have made to the college, the local community, and the nation. Resolution number 2119 recognizes September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month. Under President Lyndon B. Johnson, the observation of the contributions of Americans with ancestry from the Caribbean, Central and South America, Mexico, and Spain, was established in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week. In 1988, under President Reagan, this week of recognition, recognition was extended to a month and enacted into law as Hispanic Heritage Month. In consultation with members of our Hispanic Latino community, we agreed to celebrate this month at Napa Valley College as Latinx Heritage Month. This terminology reflects the global trend in Chicano Studies, Latin American and Latino Studies, to use the term Latinx. This terminology also reflects our values as a college that embraces inclusivity and knowledge. Latinx reflects the intersectionality of our various identities in terms of culture, language, race, ethnicity, phenotype, immigration status, gender, and sexuality, and recognizes the diversity of the Latinx community, the past, shared history of colonialism, with its inherent violence against the indigenous communities of the Americas and the forced enslavement of African peoples. At Napa Valley College, we celebrated this month of recognition with informational resources from the library, the cultural center, the artistic renderings in the form of Zoom backgrounds produced by, um, Holly's office, as she mentioned earlier, critical examination of aspects of Latinx culture through invited guest lectures, and highlights of Napa Valley College Latinx employees. In 2008, Napa Valley College was designated a Hispanic-serving institution. And per the excellent recommendation of Dr. Maria Villa Gomez at the special meeting of the Board of Trustees in September, we have developed this resolution to be presented to the board, with one of the clauses being written in Spanish to honor the linguistic heritage of the community. Resolution number 2120 recognizes October as Philippine X American Heritage Month. The celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October commemorates the earliest documented Filipino presence in the continental United States, which was on October 18th, 1587. And this was the earliest documented Filipino presence in the continental United States. I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself. When the first Luzonese Indios set foot in Morro Bay, California, onboard the Manila-built galleon ship Nuera Senora de Esperanza. After years of advocacy by individuals and organizations, in 2009, the United States Congress recognized October as Filipino-American History Month. In consultation with the organizers of our new Philippine X learning community, we agreed that at Napa Valley College, we would also use the contemporary scholarly, uh, writing, which is to commemorate this as Philippine X American History Month. So we have also begun celebration of this month through artistic renderings, informational posts, and there are planned guest lectures, the inauguration of the Philippine X Learning Community, Casay Sayan, and also through media spotlights of NBC students, alumni, and employees. I'm very pleased to present to the board these two resolutions, recognizing the important contributions and sacrifices of the Latinx and Philippine X communities to the economic, political, healthcare, and cultural enrichment and well-being of the nation, the region, and our college. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Um, do we have the option to, uh, take action on both at the same time or do we need to take them separately?
I think you should take them separately to recognize the importance of each one.
Okay. Very good. And actually, I had, I had, um, I do want to move forward with this and we'll ask for motion very soon, but I want, I'm wondering, is there any reason why we cannot just designate this as an ongoing, every year thing? Or, I mean, I know we would do the annual recognition and celebrations, but I mean, if this state legislature could, could make it a thing ongoing, is that something that we can do as well?
You, you can. You won't be able to do it in this action all, all tonight, but you certainly could address that and come back to that. As we've talked about, yeah.
Fantastic. All right.
Can I just say, um, in the language of the resolutions, um, it is recognizing the month, but it's not recognizing a particular year. So I think that this can serve as, um, you know, a recognition that is ongoing.
So I will adjutate a motion on our resolution for, uh, the, the first one that we have for Latinx Heritage Month.
Baldini, so move.
Second.
We have first from Mr. Baldini and a second from Mr. Rios. And any comments?
Do you want to, now you want to amend it a little bit during discussion so this will be an ongoing or just?
Well, I mean, I, I... Uh, you know what? Let, let's, let's leave it as is because I think it's, I think it's perfect the way it is. But I do want to, and this is something we can put into a future agenda items to, to really kind of, um, have a discussion about how to do these more proactively, I think. And it would, we're, we're playing catch up a little bit right now, um, which is our own fault because we just didn't have the staff for it before. Um, but, uh, it, it's always been kind of like, okay, we're doing a resolution for, uh, uh, Latinx Heritage Month, which ends tomorrow. So, so it's like, next time, let's, let's get, get on the ball a little quicker. So maybe if we have, um, a discussion in general about, uh, all, all of these different types of, uh, resolutions and recognitions and celebrations that we want to do and come up with a calendar of sorts or something that, that, so we can have, um, I'm, I'm sure this is stuff that's being discussed already, but just to, just to be a little more formal about it, I think would be, uh, would be good. So, in the meantime though, I think we're okay. Um, and we have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Any public comments on this?
I don't see any.
All right then. Then I will call the vote. Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
And trustee De Luna is absent and I will also vote in the affirmative. So we have unanimously resolved to recognize, uh, September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month. Thank you very much for that work. So now we're moving on to our second one for Philippine X. Is it, it, what, what is it? Heritage American Hist, Filipino-American History Month? But what, what is it that we are? Do, it's, where's our, get it all the way down to the bottom, Catherine? Here we go. Okay. So we are celebrating Philippine X American History Month, which began October 1, correct? So we're not quite as behind on this one. All right. Do we have a motion for this one?
Move, approval?
All right. So we have a first from trustee Rios, a second from trustee Iverson. Any comments, questions, or discussion? A public comment? Uh, hearing none? Okay then. Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Aye.
Uh, trustee De Luna is not with us this evening. I also will vote in the affirmative. So we have declared Philippine, Philippine X History Month. Thank you so much for this work. Really appreciate it. And, uh, it's very exciting to see the events and the, uh, marketing and, and other things that are going on to celebrate all of these, uh, all of what makes Napa Valley College so awesome. of what makes Napa Valley College so awesome. So, moving on to eight point four vaccination requirements, this one's going to be, I think, a hot one. So, we have before us a resolution to just, to discuss and take action upon, do we get that open?
Chair, would you want to take, we might have some public comment.
Yeah, and I wonder if we wanted to, if we wanted to have a presentation first?
Your call.
I said, let's do that, if there, if, Dr. Clact, if you have any information that you wanted to share with us regarding the process?
Okay.
That went into this, and then we can take public comment, and then we'll move forward with, with taking action.
Good, thank, thank you. We'll start with a brief PowerPoint, just some updates a bit. I want to thank, this is a very collaborative effort with a lot of people who are on this tonight, and also a lot of the EOP Committee Cabinet Leadership, a lot, a lot of input, so a joint effort that I'm presenting. I've also asked this group to weigh in if, if it's appropriate, or that the board has questions. The first slide that you'll see is that California community colleges that are already adopting this kind of stance of vaccinations, it's climbing. Every time, Holly's been working on this, and every time we have a number, eighty-eight community colleges, it really updates, and there's probably more, and there'll be more after tonight, because I think probably there's some in the, in the state that are meeting. So, this is to say that, you know, we're, you know, we're in, in the pocket with many other California community colleges. The next slides, a couple of slides are about some of our research. We went out for a survey as we discussed last month, seven hundred and thirty students responded, that's, that's a good response rate. Generally seeing, as you can see, eighty-three percent of the fall students responded, they were already fully vaccinated, a vast majority of them. And really, it really is pointing to the percent likely to take classes in person, and the students are really, really pointing out the fact that they are, there's a vaccination mandate on campus, the percent was fifty-four percent who, where students were given the following scenarios and asked how likely they were to take in-person classes. The, again, it's really showing the majority of students feel comfortable with this. On the, on the next slide, we asked them a similar question, but similar results emerged when students were asked how likely they were to seek in-person services, more of the services that were on campus. Same generally across the board, fifty-five percent said they were likely to seek in-person services if there was a mandate on campus, with an additional twenty percent uncertain, but likely to. So, again, you know, pretty overwhelmingly feeling pretty good about it. The next slide was really oriented towards our employees, we wanted to know how staff felt about this. Two hundred and seventy-five, good participation. Eighty-five percent of respondents reported that they were already fully vaccinated, which is good news, a very small, additional two percent are vaccinated, this has probably already changed since we gathered this information, I would think, yeah, I see Nancy nodding. Faculty and staff were asked their perspectives regarding a vaccine requirement for students and employees, and indicate their willingness to return to in-person services, and fifty-nine percent said, should NBC mandate that students be fully vaccinated? Fifty-nine percent were in agreement with that. Should NBC mandate that employees be fully vaccinated? Sixty-four percent of staff were in agreement with that, with some high numbers for strongly encouraged, too. So overwhelmingly, I think, board, there's, you can see, we have an employee and a staff support, and we have a student support. Six and seven, then the next slide really is some plans here. As you can see, all employees and volunteers, volunteers really, an official volunteer, and there's a process that people walk through to be volunteers at the college. Vaccinated by January first, all students accessing in-person classes or services vaccinated by January eighteenth. Medical and religious exemptions exist, and in a third kind of tranche of reasonable accommodations through HR processes, for those situations that fall outside of medical or religious exemptions. If people are exempting out, then it's going to require weekly testing. Face masks right now, we'll continue and we'll see, you know, if they drop away, you know, county-wide, or they drop away statewide, we'll have to see how that goes. And our plans are to make emergency grants available for students experiencing hardships due to vaccine requirement. It could be for going to get the vaccine, or time away from work, whatever it might be. And then finally, the next steps are about logistics. Finalize the vendor, we clarified and have some narrowed the, the field to, of a very good vendor to track student and employee vaccination status. Finalize the vaccination requirement protocols, there's a lot of development details on that. Finalize medical and resumption, exemption forms and processes. And then we want a lot of input, we still have a lot of work to do. Meet with collective bargaining units to work on, on CBAs and constituent groups to get their input and how best to adopt it. Finalize our website materials, including FAQs. Initiate a media campaign, so students are kind of well aware of this, that's why tonight is important, we didn't want to delay this to November, because we start pushing that envelope so close to alert students to the new requirement. And then host a series of campus conversations, so people are up to date, they know what we're, what we're asking, and hopefully we can just ease a lot of the angst in and around this with a lot of just good, solid answers and questions as we move forward. So in, in terms of the overarching plan, that is it. As you work through the res, there's a couple ways you can, we can go. We can address questions based on some of these that you just heard, work through the resolution itself, and call on folks, or just call for a, call for the motion, second, and then discuss.
Before we move off of this slide, does anyone have any questions about what's presented here? I had a question about the reasonable accommodation exemption.
Yes.
Is there a, is that just, unpack that a little bit for me?
Yeah. Chair, are you, are you okay with addressing this one? It'll be something, something unusual, or maybe a?
It would definitely be something that is definitely tied under ADA, American Disabilities Act, where individual may not be able to perhaps take the vaccination need in an accommodation, maybe it's a temporary accommodation. I'm going to use this as an example, but in no way am I stating that this has been decided yet, but if we were to provide a deferment of vaccination due to pregnancy, and so that would be a reasonable accommodation, and it has to be something that the district can agree to as a reasonable accommodation in order to allow the employee to continue with their work.
That, that works, that's a really actually excellent example, because it's kind of easy to follow through, so we don't want to use, utilize it too much, but we wanted it out there, so I think staff and students would understand that they're, it's, we'll get into the FAQs, and I'm sure that will be one of the FAQs that we'll address as well, so.
So that is something that is very clear and codified as to what they, what, what would be considered reasonable.
It's really hard to create like a list or definition of reasonable, because every situation is a little bit different, and so we have to look at it case by case to work with the employee, as well as with any documentation recommending restrictions by their physician that will guide the discussion for an employer to determine if there is a reasonable accommodation in which we can work with the employee.
I guess my question then is, is it something that is actually an exemption, or is it just about creating options for them to continue working if they have a medical or religious exemption?
Sometimes there is a medical exemption that the doctor could provide, and then there's a separate religious exemption. The reasonable accommodation is separate outside of the exemption, it allows us to work with the, the staff, the employee, to determine if there is something that we can do in an agreement to allow the employee to continue to work based on what their doctor has provided on their, on their note to the employer.
Got it, okay. Looks like I've got a couple questions, I don't know who was first, but Kyle used the button, so I'm going to give it to him. Kyle.
So, obviously, this is a tough one, and I don't think there's any way that we can, you know, make everybody happier, check all the boxes, because it's always changing. But, I mean, are we going to track down medical and religious exemptions? I mean, how does, how does one, you know, like, in the instance that we had someone that just consciously does not want to do the vaccine, how is that addressed?
Well, I, I think that that, I mean, what we're doing here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we are saying, saying the policy. The how is going to be the, the, what, what Charo and that office puts together, how to, you know, working with a vendor or something to that effect, to, to make it possible, what we're deciding is, is, is the policy part. So, not sure if that answers your question or not.
I mean, the best that it can.
Yeah, I saw Jeff had his hand up, so Jeff?
Yeah, I think it's good timing, just, it's, it's, it's similar to Kyle's question, and I guess that's the question I was going to ask, probably exactly, but I was going to make a comment, and, and what I would like to see in the resolution itself is that, you know, we're verifying that these are sincerely held religious, religious beliefs, this isn't someone that's going and getting a certificate like my brother did, who married my wife and I to become a minister for the day, you know, it's, this is, this is sincerely, and there's our policies and procedures, so I'm getting ahead of myself on comments on the resolution, but, you know, that's what I was going to be looking to make an amendment to the, to the resolution, so we're happy to discuss that an hour earlier.
Trustee Baldini?
Number one, are we, this isn't, at this point, about the resolution, is this discussion about what we see in front of us on the screen as far as plans?
We can go ahead and dive into the resolution if we want to, and we also, I know, have quite a few public comment things, so I'm thinking what we may want to do, I, I want to make certain that we do public comment before we actually take a motion.
Okay.
But, but I think that we are still, there's, there's still room for discussion at this point, if you want to pull up the resolution.
Yeah, yeah, so, well, my, my comment would be, I really don't want to know what kind of religion, and I really don't want to know what kind of medical condition. I think a exemption and a reasonable accommodation through the HR process, I, you know, as Jeff, trustee Dodd referenced, you know, making up stuff, or, or coming up with, oh, it's my religion, or it's, or it's, you know, my funny bone that's acting up, but I can't receive one. I, I don't believe that that's appropriate, just, just have a process for an exemption, and may it be reasonable.
Well, my, my assumption is that if it's a medical exemption, you would have some sort of documentation from a physician. I, I personally, and I'm going to, I'm even going to push the envelope a little further than trustee Dodd, I would prefer to not have the religious exemption, at all. I, we, there's precedent for it, because it's for K through twelve, if you have to have, there are vaccinations that are required, and the state decided several years ago that there was no longer going to be a religious exemption for that. So I personally would just say medical exemption, period. So that's where I stand. I'll leave that out there for, for, to be torn up. I saw Rafael put his hand up.
Well, it seems we're discussing, we are discussing the resolution now, or the, the terms of it.
We're, we're, we're paddling around it.
And part of, I guess part of my, my comment kind of goes to Kyle's question, and it's not something that somebody just makes up or says, and I don't know, but I've seen that there are, by other, you know, institutions or agencies, they require that you sign a declaration that you have a sincerely held, you know, religious belief that prevents you from, you know, getting the vaccination. If you're signing a, you know, declaration, it's, it's more serious, you know, that, that could have some other ramifications if you're actually lying. So I think that's as far as you can go, you can't do more than that. And, you know, I think as far as having both exemptions, I think that's typically what's being done, and, you know, is, is providing for those two, two possibilities.
Any other discussion before I open up for public comment? Alright, well, I know we had several individuals who submitted public comment that are attached, and we had a request from one of them, if I can, I can get that open to have it read aloud, which I will do, and then if we have any other individuals who are here with us in the meeting who want to speak after I finish this, then we'll do that. So this is public comment. "Good afternoon, NBC Board. As you consider a resolution today mandating a COVID-19 vaccine for all volunteer students and staff, I hope you will consider and discuss amongst yourselves the following questions. Why would you mandate a vaccine that was developed for last year's Alpha variant when the Delta variant is what the population is currently being exposed to, especially given the vaccine's risks? Why would the college yet get ahead of the county board of supervisors, the California State Legislature and the US Congress, none of which has ever passed a single law mandating, mandating neither masking nor the vaccine, making yourselves liable both individually and as an institution for any injuries or deaths that may result? Are you at all concerned about losing students and staff to neighboring institutions that don't have this mandate when you have worked so hard to recruit students and quality staff? Are you concerned about the discriminatory effect a vaccine mandate would likely have on African-American students and staff who are less likely to have had the shot? Please stand up for all students and staff and vote no on this resolution. Sincerely, Valerie Wolf, concerned resident." Thank you. And do we have any additional public comment here live? It looks like we have Cindy Van der Wold pass his hand up.
Thank you, Chair Baker. A couple of points for your consideration. The goal here is to support students for a safe and successful return to expanded in-person instruction. Our current plans are for a modest increase in in-person classes, which the student surveys say they want, and with over eighty percent already vaccinated, but for spring, we project that we will have as much as two-thirds of our classes available online for those who don't want to or cannot come to campus. Even for those that are subject to a vaccination requirement, there are sufficient protections for religious or medical or other exemptions who would be subject to regularly tested to be cleared for on-campus activity. As a recovering lawyer, I follow this environment closely, and I note that the US Court of Appeals for the Seventh Circuit, where I am admitted to practice, in the Indiana University case, considered a legal challenge and agreed that having a straightforward exemption process is legally sufficient. Similarly, the United Airlines case just this week, where a policy with no exemptions was put on hold, teaches us that our protocol strikes the appropriate balance to keep everyone healthy. to keep everyone healthy and safe. The vaccine resolution with appropriate legal safeguards is the pathway to returning instruction to whatever the new normal post-pandemic will be. And on behalf of myself and my faculty colleagues, I encourage you to adopt it. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other, um, people with their hands up?
I don't see any, uh, from among the attendees. They would need to click on the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. But I don't see any requesting to speak.
Okay. We will give them another couple of seconds while we get the resolution up. Um, and are we, at this point, I will entertain a motion to either adopt this as presented, or if anyone wants to, uh, make amendments to it, we could do that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve and, and open to discussion.
A second? Okay. So we have a motion to approve and a second on the floor, so we are ready for discussion. Do we have any additional discussion?
I think I just, sorry, Chair.
No, go for it.
I didn't wanna jump out of it. Um, you know, I, I mentioned that, you know, my comment about sincerely held, uh, I think what Trustee Rios suggested, that, that is kind of the practice. That's, that's totally acceptable to me. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're in this as a, you know, the policies and administration will be, um, evaluating, you know, and, and having policies in place to evaluate and confirming that, um, those religious beliefs and those exemptions are indeed sincerely held. So I think it's the first or, or second to last stanza, but just to, in the, in the resolution, to, to know that it's, um, sincerely, sincerely held, um, there you go, sincerely held, uh, religious beliefs.
So, um, to, to clarify, are you, are you requesting that we, uh, that we?
Yeah, I'm making, mostly I have a motion to amend.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Okay. So, and I believe the protocol is now that we have to, no, I don't know what the protocol is. Catherine, can you help me? Do we choose this one first or the, or the other one first?
Does Charo?
And I see Charo has her hand up as well. So, um, it, it will, let me, let's just go ahead and they go there. Charo, what, what do you have to tell us?
Well, under EEOC, um, for employees who are required to offer religious exemption.
Okay.
I do believe that based on what's already established in law is being carried over to apply for vaccine requirement for employees. So this is not something that I believe is optional. Um, we are being advised to offer both medical and religious exemption. So I just wanted to offer that.
Do you have any, um, uh, insight on whether or not there would be a problem with including the phrase sincerely held?
That is something that we can definitely look into. Um, and I, I don't have an answer regarding adding that language at this time.
I see, uh, um, Dr. Vanderbilt has his hand up again.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just wanna add that in general, that, um, in dealing with these matters, that, um, religious beliefs, um, sincerely held is almost support for us. Um, that, um, religious beliefs must be sincerely held in order to be legally cognizable. Um, but, um, either way, I think our practices will have sufficient room for, um, dealing with those as, as needed.
That makes sense.
And I, and I don't necessarily disagree, but I, I think it's important for purposes of setting the policy that, that we're clear that there are gonna be those policies in place.
When we get into the, uh, the guidelines, we, we can work on kind of declarative language, as, as Trustee Rios talked about for this section. Um, what I didn't wanna get into was um, a more detailed explanation of somebody who have to write, write some, um, statement of faith, or, which is ordinarily what you would have in a private institution if you were wanting to work there, um, or some exemption of. And, and it gets really, it gets very difficult to do that. There, there are sincerely held, uh, beliefs in many religions. So I think what we can do is have them declare that they're sincere and be done with that. But the investigative kind of piece of that, um, I'm urging us not to go down that direction. It would just be owner's task for.
And, and that's not, I, I think probably what Rafael's gonna say, Trustee Rios is gonna say too, is that, you know, we're not, we're not getting involved in the policymaking. I think we're delegating that to the administration to, as, as, as Trustee Rios invited, that's not our job as, as, as a board, um, is, is, we're, we're delegating that. So I totally understand that I'm wrong.
Yeah. And you said policy, but you meant, you meant guidelines.
Yeah, guidelines.
Yeah.
It's a, the, your part.
Yeah, so I, I agree with that. I was not intending to suggest that we were gonna do anything beyond that or get involved.
Great, thanks, Ron.
Do we have any other comments, questions? And before I confirm what we need to do, Trustee, uh, Trustee Dodd?
Yeah, and you have one member of public wishing to speak. I don't know if you want to do that after you take, well.
Quietly, let the public speak.
Yeah, what was that? I'm sorry?
But you can let the public speak first.
All right, okay. We'll go back to public comment then. And then we'll, and then I, and then I noted that Trustee Goff and Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez both wanted to speak. So our member from the public?
Okay, he should be ready to speak.
Can you hear me now?
We can, sir.
This is Paul Gosbodarsik. I'm the faculty chair for Career Ed and, uh, the winemaking professor here at Napa Valley College. I wanna thank you for considering this and for keeping all of our faculty safe. I've spoken with numerous faculty who, uh, support this proposal, and I also wanna, uh, recognize my peers who have taught since the beginning of quarantine endlessly, uh, because you can't teach career education online. It does not convert that way. And I just wanna do a huge shout out for, uh, all of my faculty who have really met the challenge and have continued to teach and have continued to, I mean, really make this a great college through really uncertain and, quite frankly, very scary times. And I'm very proud of them, and I'm proud to be a part of them, and I appreciate you taking this so seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, and Trustee Goff?
I, I wanted to thank all of those people who completed the survey. Really important, and I was glad to see that those numbers were really high. Um, I can't separate my, um, job as a trustee and my other job as a public school teacher in this issue, because I think of our students, who end up being your students, um, and their safety, as well as the safety of everyone who works at the college, uh, is at stake here. And I think this is a very sane and safe plan. We know, uh, you know, it's been proven the vaccination works, wearing NAS Works. Let's not go backwards. I mean, just as Paul said, um, online classes, they're, they're just don't work for a lot of things, and we need to keep our students in the classroom. Um, so I'm very glad this is on our agenda. I'm very glad to see the support for it. And this is one thing that I wholeheartedly support, and I, and I hope that, uh, the rest of the board feels the same way. Thank you.
Uh, Student Trustee had his hand up before. Did you still need to say something, Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that, um, that I went through, because knowing that I do care about the student's safety, since I am the representative here on the board, and that I read through every single public comment on this matter, and also listened to every one, and tried to really understand, like, both sides of the story as to why, you know, why they believe, some of them said, why we shouldn't have the mandate, and why some believe that we should. And I do understand both sides, some being, you know, of course, medical, religious reasons, and the, uh, forgot what they said, but like, our rights, it's usually not like, our body, our choice kind of thing. But also then again, after seeing the results from the, that we got in from many of the students here at Napa Valley College, and also from what I've heard from other students I've talked to regarding this kind of thing, that it's very important to actually have this vaccine, especially once you go back to think how they were handled before then, because, you know, it can't be completely like I was before now. Also knowing that, when I looked it up, I saw that K through 12 schools are not being required to have their students and staff vaccinated, from what I saw from Governor Newsom, uh, beginning this month. And to me, I thought that, it's like, oh, there won't be a matter of time before they make the colleges also go in that direction as well. So that's why I think it's better to maybe do it right now, because I do think it might happen later on in the future. But also to try and comment for those that have the medical, have the religious, um, exceptions, and try to give options to those that just don't, mainly don't want to have it. Well, you know, still the online course and everything. And yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Baldini?
Yes, thank you. Uh, back to what I'm looking at, the last sentence, including exceptions for medical conditions and religious beliefs. Now, that, per my understanding of what, uh, my fellow trustees, uh, Rios and Dodd, would, uh, including guidelines for medical conditions, is, is that, would that be more appropriate, given that we're not actually developing these, uh, um, but just stating some, some desires? Or is that just two words, you know, throwing it out?
I think we'd leave that to HR to do what necessary.
Yes.
I just had a thought, though, um, uh, because of what Trustee Soto Gonzalez brought up about the mandate from Governor Newsom. Uh, the K through 12 mandate actually does not go into effect at the earliest until August of next year, because, uh, the current vaccine, even those for 12 through 17, um, is still under emergency status. And it just occurred to me that we have very likely some students who would be on campus who are under 18. And so I'm wondering, do, since that, we don't have a general authorization from the, uh, FDA yet for that age group, would they be exempted from that?
They would be. I think we could handle them under what Charo talked about in terms of
Reasonable.
the, the kind of accommodations, because it's gonna be a very few, I would hope. Um, um, but it will be, it would probably be in that separate area, I think. It's a little bit of a side, but it's a good, it's a good point. Yeah.
Okay. And I see Trustee Goff has her hand up again? Oh, you're muted. You muted yourself.
Thank you. Um, at least where I am, a, a, a good number of students um, that you will see at Napa Valley College are vaccinated. I, I think that is a real trend. Um, however, I also, I think we can do it both ways. I know initially we had set it up so certain classes, if you wanted to enroll in certain classes, you had to be vaccinated, correct? And I'm just wondering if, um, as a high school student taking a college class on Napa Valley College campus would fall into that? If you want to take a class, you know, that kind of thing, you need to be vaccinated. So it would be their choice. Um, and if they, they, they're not vaccinated, maybe they would take it, you know, again, at American County High School, are we saying that people who go to that campus have to be vaccinated? Are we, you know, or is it strictly on the Napa Valley College campus? Is it at the Upper Valley campus as well? Well, I think those are, those are details for HR to handle. Right, right. That's what I'm just. You know, either they get tested and they, they don't have it, and then they can come. But I think we're getting into a lot of detail here that, yeah, that's not part of the resolution. Okay, thank you. No, I think you're right.
I agree on what Trustee Rios is. I think we could pick it apart. We can go back and forth on this all night. There's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all. I think this is a very good start and a good policy. And I think we, obviously with, uh, uh, Bob Vanderbilt's comments, I think this is something that we can obviously adjust, because it may change. We may have to change it. So I'm, I'm for calling the question, uh, if you figure that out, Chair.
I still have to figure that out. Um, real quick, though, I do see, uh, Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez has his hand up again, so maybe he's doing his comments as well.
Um, for the people that just decide, that just, for example, that they don't have any of the medical or religious exemptions, that they just straight out don't want to take the vaccine, would they still be given the option to come on campus as long as they do the weekly testing are negative for COVID, or no? Just to try and make it equal for everyone to come on to campus?
As I am reading this resolution, the answer to that question is no. Is, am I, am I correct in that?
That would be my reading too, unless, you know, the people, they have that. They either follow the exemptions, or they can't come on if they don't have the vaccine. But I, I would call the question.
Yeah, I think, well, okay, so I need to find out which question we're calling.
I think you have to call the question on the amended motion.
Amended?
Yes.
It's a motion to amend. You want to first find out if you wanna do that.
Okay. So we had a motion to amend and include the phrase, uh, sincerely held, uh, to, for religious beliefs. Um, so with that, let me go through my list here. Trustee Dodd, what is your vote?
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trust, Trustee Iverson?
Uh, no on that one, sorry.
Okay. Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. So we have a six, one, and then with, uh, Trustee Julina, uh, absent, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, then we have passed that resolution. So that means the, uh, previous motion is just null, is that correct? Or do we have to go?
The main motion? I don't, I don't think you have to go to the main motion.
Okay, so we're done. All right, then we have a resolution. And we will be requiring vaccines to January 2022. Thank you so much for all the work. I know you guys did a lot of work on that, and it's very appreciated. It makes our job a lot easier.
Thank you. Good discussion, and we'll continue on those steps and keep the board well informed over the next month. Especially next month, we'll, we'll come in with, uh, much more, uh, detail for you, so you're in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then. So moving on to 8.5 redistricting update.
Uh, let me get this open, let me find my video. I'm just presenting this to you. Um, I've been working, uh, with a group of, I've gotta move more stuff out of my way. Uh, a group led by John Tudor in the Napa County Elections Office on redistricting. Um, what you're looking at here is basically our, our Napa Valley College webpage on redistricting the trustee areas. So this is the information about the process. Some of you attended this first public outreach workshop on September 16th that was run as a virtual meeting on Zoom by John Tudor. Uh, this next one is going to be in person on November 16th at the Napa County Office of Education. Again, a public outreach workshop. I think they're going to focus more on how to play with the maps. Um, then what happens is on January 18th, at your regular board meeting, you're gonna have a public hearing on draft map. So I think John Tudor is gonna bring us, um, drafts of how your trustee areas might be redrawn according to changes in the census. And then on February 10th, you will hopefully adopt the final maps. Um, and let me see if there's information. This is what the current maps look like. This is the Fair Maps Act link. And what do we have down here? A community of interest. It's an online forum that people can go to to describe what they consider to be their community of interest. Um, and that's described, described right here. Um, so this, I, I created a PDF in case you have any, any constituents who would like information about it, you can send, grab this and send it out to them. And it is on the webpage. It's also in Spanish, and these documents are also offered in Spanish down here. And that's, I just wanted to update you. Moving forward.
Thank you. And just to confirm, the, the event that's on November 16th at NCOE, that's, it, it's described as a joint meeting, but it's, it's just a workshop, correct? It's similar like the last one, the, similar to the last one? Okay. And do we have at any point where we have a meeting where? Do we have at any point where we have a meeting where it's like where we actually have to, I mean, I, I know we will eventually, but is there anything in the near future where we ought to be there?
Only your two regular board meetings, that's January 18th and February, I think, 10th.
Perfect, thank you.
And those are public hearings and, and I think, I believe John Tudor comes to those and walks you through the situation.
All right, then. Thank you very much. Any questions from anybody or shall we just move on? All right, then. So we are ready for eight point six, Superintendent President's search. And we have in here a, the announcement, the new and improved announcement that has been worked over many times by many, many people. And I believe that all of those people are adequately represented and I believe everyone is pleased with this outcome. And so, but if anyone has any comments or if we want to make any changes to this, we still have time to do that. I think it, we've done a really good job here. So, but if we want to take a look at that and see, we do need to prove it so that we can actually start this recruitment, which, and we'll look at the timeline as well, but at this point, we're looking at opening the position in November. And it would be open for, in November and through, through December, I believe. And I see trustee Goff. This is your baby. Go for it.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out that both of these went through the search committee and the constituents had time to schmooze it and to play with the dates on the timeline as well as the wording. And a small group was entrusted to fine tune this job announcement. So I feel really good about it. I really feel like we listened to everybody and everybody got to put their two cents in. So I'm pretty confident that this is a really good, or good document and good timeline.
Have any questions or comments about either of these documents? I know the timeline one is one that has come up continually even, even still. So I did want to give opportunity to discuss that if there are ongoing concerns. This timeline that we're looking at this evening has a projected date of making a decision of, for the, where the board would make a final decision on who to go into contract with in the, at the March meeting. That doesn't, and then we have the new president to start as early as April 2022, but we are going into this knowing that it may be that whoever this individual is will want to wait until June or July, depending on what their prior commitments may be. And so we will be, although we have a projected date of making an appointment for March, we would not necessarily have that person starting right away. I see Kyle, has his hand up?
Uh, yeah, and I know that this has been discussed and I've had folks reach out to me and I just wanted to thank the comments and the time of those individuals. And, you know, I, I 100% support the committee. I'm, I don't think it's anything that we need to rush into. I would like to see the, the date of March pushed out because I know even if we did come up with that, it would be up to, you know, it would go to negotiation on the start time. So I don't, I just want to acknowledge that there is no rush and I'm totally open to pushing the timeline out and looking at interim options.
Yes, and speaking of interim, and I'll get, I do want to address that as well, but really quickly, I do want to say, I, I feel like the timeline for the, at least the first two thirds of it is, is really solid right now. I think we've got a plan for recruitment. We've got a plan for when, when the initial applications would be reviewed and for interviews, we've got all of that nailed down. I don't have a problem with adding additional time at the end if we find it to be necessary. I kind of would feel good about just going ahead and adopting it as is, but knowing that it's a roadmap and that we can change it if we needed to. Regarding interim, the board did have a discussion this evening in closed session about that and we have made the decision that we will be bringing on an interim CEO starting January 1 this next year. And that person is going to be an external candidate. We don't know who that person is yet, but we will be working to identify that person very soon so that they can begin their work as soon as Dr. Kraft is, has departed. And then that person could easily be with us for six months. And so that gives us the flexibility to add additional time at the end for further consideration if we need to, need it. But that's, that's kind of where we are right now. I want, so I see Mr. Baldini has his hand up.
Thank you, yes. I like the addition of that mutually agreed or sometime after, because when that decision is made in, in March, that's a quick move for wherever they're coming from, wherever families affected. I want them to be settled in, in the community of Napa and, and get a chance to have their feet on the ground. It's, that's what I feel a bit more comfortable with. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think that in general, as I was just saying, that the front end of this timeline feels really solid to me. I feel, and I don't have any problem with us having a little extra time on the end, but I don't know that we want to plan it that way. Because I know there's also been some concern about, you know, if you've got people who are in the job market and we don't want to have a really excellent person get snapped up by somebody else if we delay. But we don't want to rush. So we have to find the right, strike the right balance here. And at least with having an interim in place by, in January and having the option to keep that person into June if necessary, that gives us a little bit more of a, more flexibility to, to make those decisions as we get there.
Yes, I, I don't want to see it exclusionary on either end, whether, as you, as you mentioned, the chair breaker, it's the here and now, but also the other point of view that somebody that, that can't do that and that they're excluded and perfectly qualified. So I like that flexibility. Thank you for including that.
I do, I, you know, I respect the recommendation of the committee and I, I hear the flexibility with the timeline and on the backside of it. So I am open to make a motion if you're asking for one.
I would be happy to entertain a motion.
Uh, I will move for approval of the recommended.
Let us be clear on what you're approving.
I was, so I, I moved for approval on the recommended job description coming out of the hiring committee and the tentative timeline with the, I, the notion that we are going to be flexible with the March hire date.
You mean the job announcement?
Yeah, I just want to clarify there, because job description is a different document that is not going to, we're not going to be doing tonight.
Right. I'm with you. So I will correct that to.
Announcement.
President position announcement and the flexibility of the timeline.
And do we have a second to that?
A second. Trustee Baldini.
Thank you. So first from Iverson, a second from Baldini. Do we have any additional questions or discussion? And do we have any public comment on this?
I have not received any and I do not see any.
And does anyone else have any thing to weigh in? Okay, then I will call the question. Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And trustee Deluna is not with us, so I will also vote in the affirmative and we have a unanimous plan to go forward. So Dr. Griffin and Ms. Walker, you guys have your marching orders. And we're, and we got a lot of work to do, a lot of work is not done yet. Thank you very much, everyone. So let's move on then to eight point seven, board goals. Um, just, actually, I went ahead and left this on the agenda, even though we don't really have anything to discuss. We had brought this forward in our retreat back in, we didn't actually retreat anyway. We just kind of, well, we had a meeting on Saturday, so I guess that makes it a retreat. So we, where we were discussing this, we have to do this every other year. And so we're a little behind on this, but we do want to get it done. Uh, we had ad hoc committee that started on it and we did not get anything to do. So we're going to kick this probably until November. However, I did want to just make certain that we kept it on here just as, in case there's any discussion that anyone wants to have on it. I know, one of the things that I just wanted to say in terms of like directions to our ad hoc, I suppose, is that we have, our conditions have changed quite a bit since, since two years ago. And I'd say they've even changed since we were discussing this this summer. Uh, we've got, you know, COVID, post pandemic, all of that. We've got transition, we've got finance issues that we're trying to nail down. So I would hope that, I know a lot of the goals that we had stated two years ago, we were unable to complete because of COVID, but I would hope that you'll look at those things and kind of, like what the intent was and see what can be done to remodel those so that we can continue on the work that we had hoped to do previously, but then also taking those new things into consideration as well. I don't know if anyone else has any comment or anything that they want to add to that? If not, we can just go ahead and move on.
So are you saying that the ad hoc committee will bring us something in November?
That's what I'm hoping, yes. And yes, because we do need to get this done as part of, as part of our job. So we want to get it nailed down. And, you know, I, the document we put together two years ago was really nice. It was very, very, you know, clean and lofty and we had really great ideas and then it all just.
Yes, I think it was you and Rosa and I.
And then it hit the fan. So I mean, there, there's still quite a bit of really good stuff in those goals that I think we can continue to work toward. They just may need to be massaged a bit. And I, and, and then again, I'm really hoping that we can maybe get a little more concrete this time and to address some of, some of the things that we're going to be facing in the next, the next 12 months, 12 to 24 months, I guess I should say. So, and now moving on to eight point eight, annual board officer selection process, kind of in the same boat with this one. We don't have anything formally to act upon. The ad hoc was not able to come to any specific conclusion. I just want to give a little bit of background on this again, just to get everybody oriented because, where, where this came from. This came up again also during our retreat and it was something that I had really wanted to put forward and have wanted to for a couple of years actually, to try to clean up our process. When we discussed it in August, we actually, at one point, were kind of going almost back to the drawing board and saying, well, what if we did it this way? What if we did it this way? What if we did it this way? And there were a lot of different options that were explored. And I think that the ad hoc committee kind of got stuck in the same, you know, just whirlwind. So my new recommendation to that ad hoc committee, and you guys can do with it and come back in November if you, with, with, with something that we could vote on. My primary concern that I think is shared, that we'll, we'll open it up for discussion, was not so much, you know, what, I think the election process and having people nominated and elected is perfectly fine. The one thing I really do not like is the, what I've been calling, what I've been calling the family feud syndrome is, or the jeopardy syndrome, anyway, whoever gets to the button fastest wins. And I'd really like to remove that. If we could take that one piece out of our process, I, I think we would solve a lot of issues. Is that even if we, so if we have people who are nominated, we have multiple people who are nominated, you get a second, you're on the slate, and then we just vote for everybody all at once, rather than we vote for one person and whether they win or not, then we go to the next person and see if they win or not. And so just put it all together onto, you know, as, as lay what you can do. And that would be, I think that would solve a lot of issues. And Kyle, you've got your hand up and you are de facto chair on this ad hoc. So what do you have to say?
Well, so we did go back and forth and to trustee Baldini and trustee Deluna and myself. There was discussion and trustee Deluna is ill, so I hope she's feeling better and on the upward swing of it. But I think we have bigger fish to fry and it's, I get our, our chair elections, I think, are up in November. I think there was some consensus, so hopefully we can bring something back from the committee in November. I think there's bigger issues. I think it's fairly democratic, but I'm totally open for fellow trustees' comments. I know it is uncomfortable, like I agree, but I don't, I guess I'm confused on the first to the button.
Well, it's just, we, we've seen it and I've seen it in action, what, four or five times now? And it always, it, it, it just, it's, it just does, it does seem to come down to, especially this last time, you know, I, it was very much like a who got there first. And we want to, I always want to make certain that it is as fair as we can make it and, and so that we, you know, because it's, it's really one of the few times where things get a little sticky and awkward, which I'm hoping, you know, it, that is what it is. But I would hope that we can at least come up with a way to do it where we don't have a scramble, so to speak.
I don't know that it would change the outcome of anything.
It probably wouldn't. It probably wouldn't, but it would be less stressful.
It's an inherently stressful job, though, so it's not easy. So that's, and I don't, I don't want to spend a bunch of time on it tonight, so I, we will circle back as a committee and we'll bring something back in November if that's what you guys all are, just like a head nod, yes, we'll go forward with it.
Does that mean, does that mean we won't elect until December? Do we usually wait until December?
Actually, we normally don't elect until December anyway.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought it was November.
When, one of the things that we discussed in August was the possibility of having people who were interested is basically just say that, say that as part of their board report in November so that it wasn't like a big surprise. But, you know, but that is neither here nor there. And so we, we, either way, we would not be taking action until December.
Until December, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or anything, otherwise we will move off of there.
I actually like that idea.
Of what, of having.
Throwing your hat in the ring in November at the end and saying, hey, I'm interested and then seeing what happens in December.
So noted for, for.
There you go, Kyle. There's a suggestion for you.
We will, we'll come back with something. I hear you guys.
It's not hard work.
Trustee Baldini.
Terrible. I have like zero upper body strength, so no arm. All right, Mr. Baldini, you have your hand up.
Just a technical issue, I'll be switching devices here, so I'll come back. All right.
We'll be sure you let, we let you back in.
Yes.
Okay, then moving on then to eight point nine, a progress report. I believe this is Dr. Warnall.
Yes, good evening, board, or good evening again, I guess. So each year, the Office of Research, Planning and Institutional Effectiveness, or RIPi, compiles an annual progress report, tracking accomplishments associated with the institutional strategic plan. I'm here to present the 2020-2021 progress report, describe its purpose and structure, and provide a summary of highlights from last year. So the annual progress report represents one document among a set of documents the MVC uses to monitor its annual performance relative to established goals. Another example of a regular annual report is the core indicators report, which will be presented to you next month. Documents such as these help address accreditation standards associated with institutional effectiveness, including accreditation standard 4C8, which pertains to the governing board. So standard 4C8 states, "To ensure the institution is accomplishing its goals for student success, the governing board regularly reviews key indicators of student learning and achievement and institutional plans for improving academic quality." The annual progress report represents an effective institutional practice of reporting out accomplishments or closing the loop regarding our institutional goals and associated initiatives. The 2020-2021 progress report provides a sense of the substantive improvements that were made across the institution to promote the six institutional goals and improve student success last year. Just to remind you briefly, this is a little bit paraphrased, but roughly speaking, MVC's six broad institutional goals include: Working with local educational partners to equip students with the skills and resources needed for college success; Engaging MVC students while they're here to assist in their progress toward educational and job training goals; Increasing student achievement, or also known as the completion agenda; Achieving equity in student outcomes and promoting student, promoting, excuse me, equity-mindedness as a means to evaluate district practices; Ensuring the fiscal stability of the college as it transitions to a community-supported district; and collaborating with community and civic partners. Uh, the progress report is structured around the strategic initiatives, measurable objectives, and deliverables associated with the broad institutional goals established for 2018 to 2023. Uh, progress is reported in multiple formats for each goal. Uh, first accomplishments associated with specific initiatives are described in summary form. The summaries focus on the activities that are new and unique to 2020-2021. The performance measures are then presented in the form of a report card with recent performance reported alongside the 2017-2018 baseline measures. And as has been our practice in recent years, the report card includes color coding and shading to convey the magnitude and direction of changes over the established baselines. And finally, any deliverables associated with the strategic initiatives are identified. So some of the highlights from the past year include: Increasing partnerships and expanding remote supports for students; Updating classroom facilities and equipment; Promoting completion by working with local four-year institutions to facilitate transfer and with degrees when due to identify students who are eligible for degrees; Professional development, including the Instructional Design Institute, caring campus, and equity training for all constituent groups; Increasing the capture rate across Napa County High School districts; Increasing internal, external supports for students, and in part, that has been due to COVID. Uh, there's been an increase in the proportion of first-time degree or transfer-seeking students who completed transfer-level math and transfer-level English in the first year. There's been an increase in degree and certificate offerings; An increase in students earning associate degrees for transfer; An increase in the resources to support internship opportunities for students; And a decrease in the average time to completion. The annual progress report is reviewed by the Planning and Budget Committee, shared with the governing board, and distributed among the campus community each year. Uh, the report that you have um, attached to your agenda tonight uh, was included on the agenda for the Planning and Budget Committee last month, and it will be distributed among the campus community and posted on the RIBI portion of the college website in the next few days. That's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? All good? All right then. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Warnall. Okay, nine point one, approval of revised academic calendar. This was to add the additional day for the Veterans Day of servants and also for Juneteenth. Um, I don't know that we have any need for presentation or anything on this. I think everyone's already well aware of it. Does anyone have any questions? If not, we will, I will entertain a motion to approve the new calendar.
Trustee Baldini, so move.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a, a first round trustee Baldini, a second from trustee Rios to approve revised 2021-22 academic calendar. Trustee Dodd, here's your vote.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Student trustee Siro Gonzalez.
Aye.
And trustee Deluna is not with us, and I will also vote in the affirmative. So we have a unanimously approved new calendar. Speaking of calendars, we're on now to the consent calendar. So do we have any items that need to be pulled for discussion? And just noting that we did have the one item, ten point seven, that has already been pulled and will not be part of this action.
Uh, move for approval with the removal of ten point seven.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, I think I heard Jeff.
All right, no, 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 that's fine. Baldini can have the second. I just need to recuse myself from ten point eight. I'm on, I'm on the board of CHI.
Okay, well, then we'll, then we'll give it to trustee Baldini then, just to make it simple. All right, so we have a first from trustee Iverson and a second from trustee Baldini. Uh, trustee Dodd, you are recusing yourself from, can you do, can you recuse yourself from a single piece? I don't know if you can.
I'm recusing myself. Well, I, let's, let's give it a shot and see how it works out. Ten point one, point seven.
All right then. Uh, but everything else is, is an a, I'm assuming. Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Student trustee Siro Gonzalez.
Aye.
And I will also vote in the affirmative, and trustee Deluna is not with us. So we have a unanimous uh, approval of the consent calendar. Moving on to then, oh, fun. Eleven point one, California Community College Chancellor's Office Quarterly Financial Status Report for the period ending September 30th, 2021. And our VP of, our interim VP of Finance, I think is still with us?
I'm here. Sorry.
All right.
All right, well, um, if, if Catherine be so kind as, as to put, put onto the screen the um, uh, the CCFS 311Q, well, well, that's the first item. Um, that is just a, a, a quarterly uh, report that we, we make to, to the state. And um, I'm pleased to, to say that uh, um, it is, it is certainly um, gotten done on a timely basis. Again, one of the, the issues from our audit. And I do, um, the numbers you have, you, you see reflected here. Um, a lot of this information where they show the actual 18, 19, the actual 19, 20, uh, some of that information is filled in by the, the Chancellor's Office based on information that's been um, printed in, in uh, uh, previous years. Um, you can see where we have listed our, our budgeted, um, you know, our, our budget for, for um, 21, 22 is the forty, for revenues is the forty-five um, million dollars. And our expenditures to date um, have um, we're still looking at some, some of the, yeah, our expenditures to date have been um, minimal um, in, in comparison to the year, but we project that we're going to be um, you know, spending all of the money. Our expenditures to date, um, let me see, I'm looking at the other alcoves, the unrestricted expenditures. You know, actually, I've got, I've got a, a spreadsheet. It would probably be more informative than this, but the, the main things uh, we need to, to um, put down is although the um, actual 2021 information is not there, that is supposed to be something that is uploaded by the Chancellor's Office. It may not have been uploaded because the due date is actually November 15th. So we are very, very much early. Go ahead and scroll down. Um, of a little bit of concern is our cash position. Um, as of September 30th, we, we have a negative cash at the county treasury. Now, the county will allow us to go negative in, in our cash to the extent that our other funds have, have monies in them, such as our bond funds. Um, but that is a concern. I know that's something that, that uh, uh, I present to the board as, as an issue that we're addressing. Um, in fact, that's, that's now the, the next item that we're going to make sure of because last thing we want to do is not be able to make payroll. Um, continuing on down, uh, the next page, you can see as percentage of a, of revenues, uh, the, that uh, to date, we've collected a little, a little under 5% of all of our revenues. That's not unheard of for a um, community-supported district because most of the monies we received, or 96% of the money we received is um, well, 48% of that is received in December and another 48 in April and when taxes are due. Um, as far as our expenditures to date, uh, we're a quarter of the way through the year and our expenditures are just under 24%. So that's, um, that, that is on, on, on track. Um, the fund balance, uh, because everyone's interested in that. Uh, currently, we're budgeting an eight point five five. They rounded it to eight point six. We are actually showing a, a small $358,000 improvement in our uh, fund balance based upon our, our currently budgeted numbers. Uh, if we go down to item number five, that's, um, that's information that the State Chancellor's Office wants from us uh, with regards to the settlement of, of any agreements. Um, you know, we do have, uh, we have settled with, with the faculty, uh, but the reason that we don't have numbers for 22, 23, and 23, 24 is the fact that their um, salary adjustment will be based upon the uh, increase in uh, local property tax revenues, and we don't have those numbers yet. So that's the only reason we don't see that there. We do, we do have numbers for, for the classified, and those are reflected there. And you can see what the uh, estimated increase in costs are going to be. They do ask how we are going to afford this. And if uh, our increases in a local property tax continue, then it'll be the increases in the local property tax that will afford us those increases. Go ahead and scroll, scroll down to the next page. Uh, they have uh, several questions, um, you know, one we've already addressed that, uh, you know, did, did we give a raise? They want to know if, if it also covers, um, you know, temporary faculty. Yes, it does. Um, there are some issues there that we say, yeah, you know, that, that, yes, we are meeting their requirements. We have, you know, item number six asks if we've done any borrowing. Uh, the answer to that one is no, we haven't, we haven't yet. I'm hoping that we don't have to. Um, and then they ask if there's any significant fiscal problems that must be addressed this year. And one of the items that they have in their uh, um, instructions is that the State Chancellor's Office sees as a problem is any district being below um, 10% of fund balance. And so we had to answer yes to that one. And how we're going to get out of that is hopefully from, through our um, being frugal with our expenditures and the uh, um, the increase in, in local property taxes. So that's kind of the answer to that one. But I know there was a, a, a question, and Catherine, if you can put up the spreadsheet? Because I, one of the board members, and I apologize that I cannot remember, you know, who asked for this information, if, if you can blow that up. Basically, this is all the input information that I, I use for the CCFS 311Q. Um, on the left-hand side are, are the um, categories that match up to what you saw on, on the report going to the State Chancellor's Office. Green is all the information that I have to input into the system. Um, and it's for 21, 22. You can see the same sort of numbers uh, below that are in bold. Uh, you see that, that revenues to date are 40.5%. The expenditures are 23.9%. There was a request to see how did that compare to last year? Revenues last year at this point were 5%, and our expenditures were 24%. So we're pretty close to uh, how we did things last year. There's always going to be a little, little variance on local income. First of all, that's not that big of a number in the first place. And a lot of our local income is based upon uh, our student enrollment fees. And uh, so that, that can change depending on, on, on the collections we have. And then uh, in the expenditure area, other operating expenditures, we have a lot of upfront uh, operating expenditures such as, as insurance. And um, so that's why that number always seems so high when we're only a quarter of the way through the year. And that's kind of a, a look at our revenues and expenditures per the CCFS 311Q, which is, is on time this year. Any questions?
Well, thank you for this document. I was the one that asked for it. Now I can't even see it because my eyes are old. But I do appreciate the work and, and also, thank you, Catherine.
Um, there's, there's clearly some areas that we need to be looking at, right? I mean, did we get it right last year? Um, I mean, is that a good comparison? I mean, I mean.
No, the numbers we see for last year, I, I, you know, they're, I, I, I think they're, they're, they're solid numbers for the, you know, unrestricted general, general fund. Um, one of the issues that I brought up before is, you know, just how much, you know, had we spent in the unrestricted general fund that we wound up having to move to the restricted general fund? Um, that is something that, that we're going to be, you know, working on diligently um, the rest of this year. Um, and I think everyone is, has, has, has heard me um, uh, get on my soapbox on this. So um, I think it's being taken to heart. Um, you heard a little, um, yeah, you, you may have heard that, that, you know, I'm working with, with Charo to make sure that we have all of our um, salaries and benefits correctly coded. Um, but no, I, I, you know, what this says to me is, yeah, we're, we're on track. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, is there sufficiency of, of the budget? At this point, it would seem that, yes, our expenditure, what we have budgeted for our expenditures, we're a quarter of the way through, through the year. We're, we're, you know, we, well, we're about 24% spent. So that's, that's kind of on par. As I said, the, the ones that always look just a little off will, will always be the, the other operating expenditures because that's where we have some contract payments, uh, insurance being probably one of the largest ones. And that's, that's an upfront cost. So it, it, at the moment, it looks good. It's, you know, the, the issue that the district has had is that um, we, we have had a tendency to, you know, by the time we get to year end, we've spent more than, than we've taken in. And so we will be watching that uh, very carefully. Um, I would certainly look at uh, where we are uh, when we submit the second quarter report. And hopefully, all the expenditures are below 50%, and that's always a, a good mark.
Any other questions or um, comments?
I just, Doug, you have probably, in my eyes, the worst job, but uh, you're doing a good job.
I think he likes it, though. He likes numbers, you can tell.
He does, but a good job. Clearly, clearly, there's some things that we need to look at and just thank you for.
Well, it is, yeah, it's, it's, it's doing the things that need to be done. I can write about them later.
I, I do have um, just two quick questions. One, one, actually, just to verify some, a couple of things. The, the part where we are um, short on cash, where we're in, in, there. Um, is that simply because there are funds that are anticipated that we have not received yet? Or is that, is there another problem?
Yeah, no, that, that, that's correct, is this kind of cash flow issue is um,
Yeah, no, that, that, that's correct is this kind of cash flow issue is, um, just part and parcel will be in a community-supported district because we all, we get the majority of our mon- money only twice, December, which, which is, you know, a full six months, you know, pretty much six months after our fiscal year has started. So we have about six months of, well, we have more like, yeah, about five months worth of expenditures before we get our first six months worth of revenue. Now, of course, in April, it's, it's a little, little bit easier on us, but, um, generally, you know, what, what is, has been helping us has, has been, you know, the collections of, of our funding. But one of the things, you know, even though it'll, it will show as revenue is the, um, is our student accounts receivable. So on an accounting basis, you know, we're, 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 we're debiting accounts receivable, we're crediting revenue. But as an asset, you can't pay people with a, with an accounts receivable. You have to have cash. And so we've been making this, you know, slow but sure trade of our, of our total assets is got to be a higher and higher amount of money that's owed to us by students. Now, saying that, um, there is a, um, some hearth funding. This is, you know, some, some of the, uh, uh, federal aid money, COVID aid money that can be used to help offset, uh, some of that money. And we are, are pursuing, um, that, you know, as, 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 as we speak. Um, so, but that, that is something that, that, you know, I'm, I'm in hopes that in time, um, you know, once we rebuild a, a, a healthy fund balance, that this won't be a problem. And, but knowing that, that, you know, where we are with our funding, um, how some of our funds are tied up, um, you know, as other, you know, as, as some of our, our assets are, are, are non-fungible, if we can improve that situation. Um, but otherwise, um, going out for what they call a tax revenue anticipation note or a TRAN is something that, that, um, used to be what community colleges did all the time, especially during those years where, uh, the funding from the state was, uh, was, uh, when we received a lot of deferred revenue from the state. And, um, and we may have to do that in the future. But it is where we are right now and we're going to take care of it.
Thank you. My, my other, my other question is really just, I just wanted to clarify again, kind of, uh, the change that is being made, that I think is a good thing is that, as I understand it, when, as bills were coming in previously, they were just pretty much charged to general fund and, and the object codes and things like that weren't really, you know, uh, cleaned up until the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
And, and that is, that's being changed, is that correct?
Uh, as, as we find items, we are changing it. As I, it, it's, it's partly human nature. Somebody, somebody wants to, wants something right away. And it's, they had, they probably know that it belongs to one of our categorical programs, but we don't have that account set up yet. And so the idea, and with good intentions, we'll get the item now and then we'll fix it. But then, you know, several months pass by and then suddenly it's year end.
Right.
So we're working on it.
It sounds, it sounds like we have a plan to, to put new processes in place that will clean things up and keep us on the straight and narrow.
Well, it's, we've already just, we've discussed this at, at cabinet and this is one of these things where it's, it's from the top down. And it's been, you know, the VPs are, are the next level and they are to transmit it down to their folks. If somebody knows this is categorical money, then they better not be charging it to Fund 11 because that's not where it belongs. And we've already caught some large dollars that we've, we've said, no, we're, we're stopping here, we're changing the account.
Good. Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Do, and we need to, we need to vote on this one, correct? We need to vote to accept this. So do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
And we have a second.
Second.
All right, first from trustee Iverson and second from trustee Rios. Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini? Trustee Baldini?
Uh, did we lose him?
Uh, I'll come back. Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And did we find trustee Baldini?
No, it looks like he left and did not come back. Remember, he said?
Yeah, he was having.
Do we have a majority?
We do, we do. So I will also try, uh, vote, uh, in the affirmative. So we have accepted that report and now moving on to 11.2.
All right. Well, members of the board, um, was being presented to you, uh, this evening is the CCFS 311 for fiscal year, uh, 2021. And, uh, you know, and again, I will, will, you know, thank, um, you know, the, the accounting staff for working very diligently to, to get the books closed, cause you cannot, you cannot do this report without closed books. It just cannot be done. And so they've worked very hard to, to get all, all this done. Um, it's 48 pages of, uh, just a whole lot of stuff. And so Catherine, if, if you would not mind pointing up, and instead of starting in the very front, you know, I'd like to get rid of, let's start at the very back with, with what I'd call the small stuff, cause the stuff we want to talk about is, is not the last page. So Catherine, if you can get to the last page. Okay, one of, one of the thing, yeah, and if you can get to the last page and blow it up. Okay, this is just to look at, at, you know, what we anticipate for our increases in STIRS and PERS. And we still are seeing some increases in, in the, uh, in the PERS, um, contribution. We're well over, uh, 20% in, um, PERS contributions. They don't go down for, for a while. You can see what, what the, uh, annual increases are, uh, for the years out. Again, is, is my hope that our increases in, um, uh, uh, local property taxes are going to help us afford this, but we will budget these expenses as they come. Next page up is the EPA, uh, revenue report. This is something, it's a one-liner, but it's required, um, by, by Prop 30. So we need to tell them how we've used the money. It goes into our general fund, but we use it for, uh, sellers and benefits in the instructional area. Next page up, we're actually going up two pages, cause that's just the budget side. The next page up, page 46 is, um, a look at, at how we've used our lottery funds. And we, unfortunately, yeah, just scroll down a little bit. Uh, there's two columns there, the columns on where it says total unrestricted, uh, we had $681,000. Under Prop 20, that is restricted lottery money. And we had a little over $200,000. And the Prop 20 money is primarily to be used for instructional, uh, supplies and materials. It can be used for, for leases and such. Um, and we spend, we spend every penny of that money every year, but we are required by law to include this in our annual report. Um, moving then on up to, uh, page 44, uh, okay, this is, it just says what, what our inter-fund transfers have been. Uh, those are reflected when we look at the revenues and expenditures of the funds themselves. So it's really, um, this report is a lot of busy work. But, you know, the, the state chancellor's office, you have to have it all uploaded. It all has to match because it's cross-referenced several different ways. The next page I want to get to is actually one of interest and that's page 33. Because between pages 33 and 34 is the revenue and expenditures of all of our funds, but the one that we really want to look at, and you want to blow this one up so people can see it. Okay, is right there, we can stop where it says Fund 11. And you can see the actuals that we had in 2021 and the budget we have for 2022. So you can see what the revenues we had, 41, um, .9 million dollars. Go ahead and scroll down a little bit. I gotta stop right there. You can see that, that our expenditures in, in that first column is, uh, well, basically we, we are, um, well, when we get down to the net increase/decrease, we overspent, uh, 20, 20, 20, 21 by $141,000. But we are, you know, protecting a, um, revenue over our expenditures of 358,000. They, Fund 12, which that's the next, next two columns over, then the last two columns are the total for Fund 10. Um, we recognize revenues to the extent that we have expenditures. So you never see any increase in fund balance, but if you get to the bottom of the page, um, you can see where we're ending up with our fund balance. We are looking at an ending fund balance of three, uh, just a little under, uh, 3.5 million and we hope to have 3.8 million. Uh, one of the big, big things that I, I do have to point out is we did have a, a prior period adjustment of a little over a million dollars. Um, that reflects the adjustment made by the auditors because the numbers that are loaded in as the net beginning balance of July 1st, that is something that the chancellor's office loads into the system based upon the information from the prior year's CCFS 311. So that's why we had to make an adjustment to bring, to recognize the adjustment made by the auditors so that we had a clean start for 2021. All right. Um, I'm going to skip the next page because it's the GAN limit. You've already seen that. Uh, if you can go to page 26. Okay, this, this is the beginning of, of a lot of tedium. Um, but basically the state chancellor's office, um, and what I mean by tedium, I think I, I spend the next six pages are all about how we spend all of our unrestricted and restricted money on a by-activity basis. Okay? Now, where this gets important is when we, and we'll talk about the 50% law in just a little bit, is that the 50% law is based upon our expenditures in the unrestricted uh, fund in certain activity codes. And so the first page shows all of the, uh, instructional activities. So keep, keep scrolling down. So, and so instructional activities are everything that the activity code 00 or 01 00 through 5900. And you can see the expenditures at the bottom. The next, next couple of pages look at all of our non-instructional expenditures and it has a breakout between, as you can see the items there, uh, for, um, instructional administration and governments, uh, instructional support services, um, when you, uh, academic administration, you see that's $4 million. Um, counseling and guidance is 6310. Uh, a good portion of that is, is, well, is primarily our couns- counseling. If you scroll on down, then you begin to get in, into the area of some of our, uh, yeah, go to page 28. You begin to get into the area of our expenditures in some of our categorical programs, um, cause you'll find, uh, the third line down, 6420, that's our DSPNS program. And then after that, you get into operations and maintenance. And then finally on the last page, so it shows where we have some of our expenditures in, uh, community services. And, um, so it's, it's a very detailed report. Um, and it's a lot of upload and it all has to match our, our general ledger. So takes a little bit of time. So anyhoo's, so that is that. If you go to page 22. That is the beginning of, of the detail of all of our revenues that we receive for both our unrestricted and, um, and restricted general fund. There's a lot of detail, um, and again, this all has to, to, you know, obviously match what we have in our general ledger. But, but the item that is probably of greatest interest to a lot of folks is, starts on page two.
Page two?
Page two. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped page five, but that's the beginning of all the balance sheet entries. Okay. Um, and we'll just skip that one, cause that's, that's, yeah. Um, but, but page two is, is the one of greatest interest and this is the, the calculation of the, uh, 50, um, for, for compliance with the 50% law. And there are three columns. There's one that says activity ECSA and that's instructional salaries and costs. This is the costs, you know, in the classroom. Okay? And as you can see, there's, you know, just below where it says instructional salary cost, and I, and I am moving my cursor trying to get it there, but realize that Catherine's cursor is while looking. No, that's all right. Um, but, but you can see that it says AC 0100-500 and AC 6110. Those are the activity codes that I referenced in one of those previous meetings. And so all of this matches up from the information that comes from those reports and they, those should be matching. Then you have ECSB, which is everything that, that we spend that is not community service related or, or some, you know, some other, um, uh, categories such as, I could go back, but I'm not going to go back to that page. Um, bear with me here. Um, for, yeah, for community recreation, uh, community service classes, community use of facilities, economic development, parking, student co-curricular, uh, and some of our ancillary services. So those are the items that, that are in that third column. And when we get to the bottom of the whole page, all of those expenditures have to match what we have just showed on our revenues and expenditures for Fund 11. Um, so we've got all these expenditures. There are certain expenditures that, that, that they, they include in the 50% law and that is shown on, on the first page. The second page looks at, at items of exclusion. And there are certain items that they exclude such as the, the cost of student healthcare, you know, above revenues received. Uh, rentals and leases are, are not included in, you know, under the, under the, the law. And then the, probably the big exclusion is, is lottery funds. And so keep scrolling down. And you'll see that 681715, which I mentioned earlier, that's the lottery money. So then you scroll down to the third page and this is where we actually get to do, you can keep scrolling, where we actually get to do the calculation. And you can see, um, well, you'll, you know, you'll see, you know, the, the first number, the 16,00362611, that is what we spent for in-class from instruction. Then you have the 38983, which is all of our other expenditures. And we have about 1,900,000 that is in the excluded area. But when you divide the 16,362 into the 38,983, um, we wind up with, with a percentage of 41.97%. Now, that is below the 50% law. And the question always comes up, well, what does that mean? Well, this, excuse me, I'm getting, getting out of my binder here. Um, if the, the Board of Governors, and that's at the state level, determines that we have fallen below the 50% mark, they may come April 15th designate an amount, um, of our apportionment, you know, equal to the apparent deficiency that is to be withheld at the county treasury for our use until action is taken to address the deficiency. Now for us as a community-supported district, the extent of our apportionment that we receive is what we receive for the 2015, 16 full-time faculty hiring apportionment money, which is a little over $350,000. So that would be the extent of the funds that, that could be held, um, to add as an incentive for us to, to, uh, uh, remediate this, this deficiency. Now, I will say that, oh, we are not the first district to have fallen below 50%. Uh, San Mateo has been below 50% for a number of years, also a basic aid district, excuse me, community-supported district. And Marin, uh, has also. And Marin has also fallen below 50% this year. And so, that's probably the report on Fund 11 where we wound up, and this report are probably the two most important reports of the CCFS 311. And I'll take any questions that you all may have.
I see Trustee Goff has her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to know, are we going to address that we're under 50%? Is that something that we're working on? Is it something that we can fix by the next fiscal year, whenever we have to fix it?
Well, I'm hoping we can. The, one of the issues, and I've kind of alluded to it, but it certainly raises its head when we're doing this calculation, is the misclassification of our expenditures. Because there are certain expenditures that, you know, we classify as part of what was that middle column, ECSB, you know, such questions as, okay, we make our facilities available to the community. How much of our electrical expense really belongs to that category? Okay? And there are similar kind of expenses. This year, I know Dr. Kraft has spent a lot of his time working on this new student housing. That is an excludable expense, but we don't have it coded that way. And so, now, for doing this report, I have made sure that all the reclassifications that I think have been kind of off the books in previous years were reflected in our books this year. It took a lot more work. But what had potentially happened in years previous is that some of these obvious expenditures that need to be reclassified were reclassified for this report, not necessarily in our books or on, you know, in the expenditure by activity. So if we clean up our act with regards to the proper identification and coding of our accounts, it should take care of some of this issue. And a lot of it is just looking at our expenditures and go, okay, this is where we've always recorded, but we've always, you know, some of it, you know, is community service, you know, some of this is our, making our facilities, you know, available to the community, and we just have to work on that. And then just, you know, within those first two columns, are those being coded correctly? Because one of the things about the 50% law is that, and, you know, I kind of skipped over it on the front page, but Catherine, if you'll scroll up. Yeah, keep going to the first page. All right. You'll notice that in that first column of ECSA, that there is no expenditure for object codes 1,200 or 1,400. Those are our librarians, our counselors, you know, some of our coordinators. Those, the work of those folks is not recognized as quote-unquote "in the classroom" and are only accounted for in the second column, the denominator. And the same thing holds true for some of our classified employees. You'll notice in that first column, there is no, you know, in-the-classroom cost for a lot of our classified folks. I do know that this 50% law has been an item of conversation for a number of years. I don't know exactly how old this law is. I think I beat it by a couple of years, maybe. But it is a law, and, you know, until it gets changed, we have to do our best to try to abide by it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what I'm hearing is that we have some additional cleanup to do, to kind of really get drilled down to the real numbers, but we also have a lot of rectifying to do.
Well, these are the best numbers we have for 2021, and one of the findings that spurred the auditors to give us a material weakness finding in 1920 was the fact that only two out of the last nine years has the district gotten this report in on time. So it's one of those things, I wish I had had more time to deal with it, but I've got, you know, Wendy Nico and Arisa Puk are, I'm making them very aware as to, you know, what these items are, and I don't, I think we will see better numbers next year just from the work that we're doing with the account coding. But it is what we have, it is what has been submitted. You know, we had a deadline, we met the deadline, but it's kind of like, by doing this and, you know, all the work to get us to this point, we're setting ourselves up to hopefully have a very quick audit because they will not be waiting for us to make our final, final closing entries. Those have been done.
Well, thank you very much. It's a lot of untangling work. I should put you to work on my kid's hair. Anybody have any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we can take a motion to accept this report. Now, take a motion then?
Our motion to accept.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Trustee Baldini, second.
Hey, you're back, thank you. All right. Any further discussion, public comments? Nothing? All right then, Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Dillanis is not with us, but I will vote aye as well. So we have a unanimous acceptance of this report. Thank you. Thank you very much for all the work.
You're welcome.
All right. Now you get to vote that, I guess. And so now, we don't have anything for 12 or 13, so we are on to 14. This is the second reading of the board policy. We reviewed this one last month and requested some change, and so this is now the second reading, and does anyone have any questions about the changes that have been made? Or?
Well, have any changes been made?
Yes, actually, yes. It's a little bit confusing, but, you know, where's the?
Yeah, here it is.
So what happened was in the, there was the, there's the law, and then there's the CCLC template, and then there was what we had originally approved, and then there was a recommended change. So we're not, so what we have before us right now is different from what we had before, which was, because this is something that we had actually approved, what, a few months ago, is that correct?
Yes, in July.
In July, we approved it with the shall be required, which was actually over and above what was in the law, and then kind of...
No, I think that's wrong. The law says, or the regs say that it shall be required.
Is that correct?
Hold on, this is what the law says.
That was the issue last time.
The law, so here, back to here, this is what you approved, and it followed the template, the CCLC template. Council of Presidents said, rejected that or recommended that you change it to this, and Trustee Rios said, wait, that's not what's in the law, which is, I think, listed below. And so, I compiled them for you and spoke to the CCLC policy analyst. So Council of Presidents wants you to change it to this, the CCLC original, which you approved, was shall be required. The law actually says shall be provided, and so, in discussion with legal counsel, they said, why don't you settle on this language? Which is very similar to the law.
So the difference is that we would provide counseling services to those students who request it, but we are not going to require that they go to, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
And that is in compliance with the law, correct?
It's closer to what the law requires, yes. Or it's closer to the language of the law. Yeah.
That's what our council has said meets the statute, so that's what we're recommending to you.
Okay, so are the attorneys happy?
Well, the, what we have before us doesn't say that.
I'm sorry, I guess I should have, I just returned this. So what I should have returned to you is this document showing this language.
So that's the language that we have.
And I'm sorry. So the motion would be to change the language to this.
Then, if we're taking a motion, I would move that it be changed to include this language as recommended by the legal counsel.
Second.
All right, thank you, lawyers.
Is that a motion from Trustee Rios?
A second from Dodd, so we got both, we got both the legal guys, they're happy, so I'm happy. Any discussion? Any public comment?
I see none, we have no more people in the public.
They all bailed. All right, so, Trustee Dodd, your votes are?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
I will vote also aye, and Trustee Soto Gonzalez is not with us, so we have a unanimous adoption of that board policy, 5110. Thank you. All right.
And I'll make sure this motion here is changed to reflect your vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, so standing committee reports. Dodd, did we, did you have a meeting, Mr.?
We have an upcoming meeting this month. The last one was changed.
Okay, so nothing to report. All right. Vida Culture and Winery, Trustee Baldini.
Yeah, so we have a meeting next Wednesday, 4:30.
Legislative Committee, Trustee Goff?
I have nothing to add to the wonderful report that Ms. Dawson gave us earlier in the meeting, thank you.
Beautiful. Audit and Finance, we have not met, Real Property has not met, McPherson is on hiatus, Ed Schenk is on hiatus. Foundation, Trustee Iverson, do you have anything for us?
He's thinking real hard, but I don't think he does.
Oh, you're muted. Trustee Iverson, do you have anything? I know, it feels, when was it that the Wine Spectator thing came out? Was that, is that been in the last month or was it before that?
Oh, I didn't know I was muted, sorry, but I do have Jessica's report, so, sorry.
Go for it.
So, we do have the president's breakfast tomorrow, that's a breakfast for our donors, and we have a retreat this weekend for the foundation. There was a mailing last week with information on the foundation's legacy giving society, and that included a brochure with creative ways you can support the foundation through gifts of stock, charitable gift annuities, and leaving a gift via your estate or will. So, and Jessica's open for any questions on that. The foundation is coordinating implementation of the Wine Spectator gift and working with the College on Publicity in the choosing of the architect. Marvin Schenken has expressed his excitement to be moving forward with the project. The foundation is gearing up for our end-of-the-year campaign. The next couple of the months are very important fundraising for the foundation, and like I said, tomorrow, the breakfast with the president, Dr. Kraft, and our retreat on Saturday. And it's, obviously, you know, things are looking really good for the foundation. I have actually, as a trustee, pledged $1,000 to the foundation, and I know Trustee Baldini has made pledges in the past, and I'm not saying everybody on the board needs to, but I would, I just want to throw it out there that financial support on some level would be very well appreciated. So, we are moving forward, so more to come as we get closer, and lots of exciting things going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the accreditation, steering committee, Trustee Dillanis is not with us, but we've had a really good update from Dr. Warrenall and McGowan, and I understand they're having a meeting on Monday, so we'll probably get something from her next month. So we are on to future agenda items. I was looking at the log earlier, and I think we've got most of these things moving along. We just heard from Dr. Tahada that honorary degrees are coming soon. Tour facilities, we're gonna put that off until, well, we'll figure something out when we can do that. Board policy, I have, policy process, I've been in discussion with several people about that, and at this point, we're looking at, hopefully, doing that in winter, of course, early spring, just because everybody has a lot on their plate right now. The land acknowledgement is being, actually, the DEI committee. I sat in on their meeting earlier this, I think it was this week, and that is something that is moving along under the direction of Dr. Moon Sammy. And, let's see, the professional development, and that was, I believe, was, we were talking about funding for professional development opportunities for the board, and so I think at this point, we can table that until we get past some of our other bigger items, but we do want to circle back for that later. Budget to audit, we're sort of getting there. Institutional play, so a lot of these things are just more of the same, but we're going to be reviewing over the next few months, and I just want to keep them on. Is anything we need to add? I know we had the public comment item earlier about the ad hoc, about the relationship between the board and the academic senate. We have not had a meeting of that committee, and I'm going to see what I can do in the next month to try to rectify that. We have been working on the relationship, but not, have not had any movement with the committees. So, I see Trustee Goff has her hand up. That you're muted.
See, it's getting late, everybody's forgetting to unmute. Did you want to create an ad hoc committee or give it to the DEI committee to work on that calendar of resolutions that you had mentioned tonight?
I think the DEI committee actually is a good place for that.
I think so, too.
Yeah, so I would, I'll follow up with Dr. Kraft about that and see that we get what sort of a report or some recommendation we can get from them in the next couple of months.
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah. All right. So, so anyway, I don't think we have anything else to add to that, and I think we are ready now for trustee and board chair reports. Trustee Dodd, do you have any report?
I have nothing to report.
Trustee Goff?
I just would like to, once again, thank Dr. Sarah Parker for attending the Evening at the Ruins event in American Canyon. It was wonderful to have she and her husband attend that and meet some of the people down here that are shaking things up a bit and making those connections and potentially developing partnerships. So I just wanted to thank her again publicly for doing that and spending the evening with us, and that's all I have. us and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Iverson?
No report. Thank you.
Trustee Baldini?
Yes, thank you very much. I apologize to the to my fellow trustees and and the staff at Faculty College for not being able to participate from 57 miles, but participate from 6,152 miles with no problem. So I'm sorry about that. I have a question for trustee Iverson on the breakfast, what time is that and where is it?
It has been moved to the foundation room and Dr. Kraft, it's actually in the community room now at 9:00 AM.
Oh, sorry.
They're gonna be eating pastries left over from today's accreditation.
We're gonna double down on those pastries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was I was impressed that you even joined us at four o'clock in the morning, so thank you for for making that effort. Trustee Rios?
No report.
Trust, student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
I didn't report.
Okay, and I also have nothing to report except that I've just been really busy. We're all of us really busy, lots going on. But thank you to everyone for all of your hard work. I feel like we did a lot tonight. We do not need to return to closed session, so and our next meeting will be, our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, the 10th of November. We're meeting a day early because of the holiday. So we'll see you same time, same place, slightly different day on November 10th of next month, so next month. And so that's it and we are adjourned at 9:11 PM. See you next month.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hi, everybody.